Quiet, please. Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on the preliminary budget on immigration. Please silence all electronic devices. At no time during or after the hearing, please do not approach the D S. If you have any questions, please raise your hand and one of us, Sergeant Dub arms will kindly assist you. Thank you very much for your kind cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone. This meeting is being called to order. I am Councilmember Alexa Vila's Chair of the Committee on Immigration. Welcome to today's hearing on the city's fiscal 2025 preliminary budget. Before we begin, I would like to thank all of those who have joined us today. New York City is home to more than 3 million immigrants. That is, at minimum, thirty-six percent of New York City's total population. Since the spring of 2022, the city has experienced, as we know, an influx of asylum seekers. And as of February 2024, over 177,000 asylum seekers have arrived in New York City. Of this total, over 65,000 remain in the care of the city. The administration has responded to the influx by opening 217 emergency shelters across five boroughs, 18 H R C. And has been collaborating with nonprofit organizations to run the navigation center, satellite sites, and the asylum legal application centers. So far, the Department of Education has expanded seats to over 32,000 migrant students. According to the American Community Survey, data shows how resources for immigrants are crucial and city agencies must better collaborate. At today's hearing, the committee will examine the fiscal 2025 preliminary budget and how it addresses the needs of existing and new immigrants in our city. We will review in depth how the budget prioritizes and/or addresses services for the immigrant population. Again, and I'm not going to be able to say it enough, that make up forty percent of New York City's population. And how the city plans to further invest in immigrant neighbors. The Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs fiscal 2025 budget totals 700,046, 746,000. That supports six positions. And similar to the fiscal 2024 adopted budget, this budget doesn't provide a full picture of Moya's budget, nor the full scope of services New York City provides to immigrants that are spread across various city agencies, including the Department of Youth and Community Development, the Human Resources Administration, the Department of Education, and New York City Health and Hospitals. The Office of Asylum Seeker Operations, a newly created office exactly one year ago, also manages and coordinates varying services that support asylum seekers in New York City. In today's hearing, we will examine O W A S O's collaboration with city agencies and how the office carries on its roles and responsibilities. Furthermore, this committee will ensure that the city is not duplicating efforts and wasting taxpayer dollars on two offices that serve to aim, that aim to serve immigrants, but have little operational authority over any programs. I want to state it clearly. Despite the claims of importance of services and an ever-increasing need, this budget has substantially reduced funding for immigrant legal services and adult literacy programs. Without proper legal representation, asylum seeker immigrant status will remain in limbo with profound long-term impacts. Adult literacy is one of the most critical programs for immigrant integration and fundamental to democratic participation and stability of communities. And yet, it constantly seems to be the target of defunding and devaluing. This defunding of literacy and legal services undermines opportunities that we seek to create in our civil society, and it just doesn't make sense and must be addressed immediately. The committee is calling on the administration to include 150 million to enhance immigrant legal services and revise the adult literacy R F P baseline 21.7 million and add an additional 10 million to adequately fund city adult education. I want to emphasize the need for adequate funding levels for services because this is about sustainability of services for immigrant New Yorkers, forty percent of the city's population. We must think long-term while managing some of these immediate concerns. Also, it is important to remind our colleagues in government and note that for New Yorkers, that a 2020 Northwestern study showed regions with higher rates of immigration also experienced higher gains in per capita income relative to other cities with lower rates of immigration, largely explained by higher rates of entrepreneurship among immigrants. Knowing that immigrants actually improve economic outcomes for our native-born workers, we should be seizing the opportunity to unlock that potential and be proactive when engaging in issues of inequity to ensure some form of stability for immigrant families in need. I look forward to hearing from the administration's strategy and budget plan and how it engages with agencies to best serve immigrants. Again, who comprise how much? Forty percent of New York City's population. After we hear from Moya and O W A S O, the committee will hear testimony from the public. Last, I would like to thank the Speaker and the Mayor in supporting needs of our immigrant communities. I'd also want to make sure that we thank our committee staff for their hard work. Florentine Kabor, Mia Hayek, Nicole, Nicole Cata, Rebecca Barilla, and my staff Christina Botego and Edward Cerner for all their hard work. Now, I'd like to, actually, oh, no, she's not here. Okay, I thought I saw a council member pop in. Now, I'd like to welcome the Commissioner of the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, Manuel Castro, and the interim Director of the Office of Asylum Seeker Operations, O W A S O. And before we hear from them, committee counsel will swear you in.
Thank you, Chair Aviles. We will now hear testimony from the administration. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? Interim Director Molly Schaefer?
I do.
Commissioner Castro?
I do.
Deputy Chief of Staff Jasnia Sanchez?
I do.
E D of Legal and Support Initiatives, Tom Tordorici?
I do.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Thank you, Chair Aviles and Committee on Immigration and Committee on Finance for holding this budget hearing. My name is Manuel Castro and I am the Commissioner of the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs. I am joined by Deputy Chief of Staff Jasnia Sanchez, Executive Director of Legal Support Initiatives, Tom Tordorici, and Director of the Asylum Seeker Office of Operations, Molly Schaefer. First, I would like to thank Councilmember Hanee for her work and dedication as Chair of this committee over the last two years. I would also like to welcome Chair Alexa Aviles to her new role as Chair of this committee, and I look forward to working closely with you and your staff. The following testimony will highlight five key areas of Moya's work in the past fiscal year and that we are looking to further develop in the next fiscal year. These are Moya's Immigration Legal Programs, Moya's English Learning Program, Moya's Language Access Work, Moya's Community Engagement Work, and Moya's Role in Responding to the Asylum Seeker Humanitarian Crisis. First, Moya's Immigration Legal Programs. Moya's Immigration Legal Programs include Moya's Immigration Legal Support Centers, also known as Action NYC, Moya's Immigration Legal Support Hotline, Moya's Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network, also known as ASL I N, Moya's Haitian Response Initiative, Moya's Rapid Response Legal Assistance Program, and Moya's Immigrant Rights Program. Together, these initiatives, along with other efforts across New York City government, seek to expand access to New York's immigrant communities with immigration legal support. Moya's specific role is to reach, hard-to-reach communities and develop local capacity within these communities. To do so, we contract with nonprofit providers to achieve this work, acknowledging the critical role nonprofits play in reaching communities where they live and cultivating trusting and ongoing relationships with them. In 2023, Moya's Immigration Legal Support Centers conducted over 14,000 comprehensive legal screenings and opened over 5,600 new cases. Along with these centers, Moya oversees an immigration legal support hotline available to all New Yorkers for basic consultations and referrals. In 2023, more than 60,000 people called our hotline. The Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network, or ASL I N, made up of innovative partnership between Moya, community-based legal service providers, and the City University of New York, provides asylum seekers both in and out of the city's shelter system with information, individualized screenings, and applications assistance. The network also provides immigration legal orientations to frontline staff such as shelter workers and self-help workshops for asylum seekers so that they may better understand their rights and responsibilities in the immigration process. Since launching in 2023, ASL I N has made more than 8,000 people participate, has more, more than 8,000 people participated in ASL I N information sessions and workshops, and more than 3,300 community members received individual consultations with ASL I N legal staff, which is followed by brief advice, application assistance, either asylum, T P S, and work authorization, post-application assistance, or referral to legal help. Now, Moya's Language Access Work. Moya made significant strides in building out the Language Access Team since last year, in the last year, which now includes 20 in-house experts and advisors on language access, up from three when I started my time at Moya. This includes 12 Language Access Specialists who not only serve as professional linguists, but also as important links to their language communities. The team's main goal is to offer technical assistance to mayor offices, city agencies, and key external partners. It also provides translation and interpretation services for mayor offices and reports on city government's language access work and local implementation relating to language access. To provide critical information to both longtime and recently arrived immigrant New Yorkers, Moya translated a range of materials into over 50 languages. Moya's Language Access Team provided translated communication materials, including signage, website resources, translation and interpretation services, service information, emails, and scripts, and so on. Because of these translated materials, our team has been working to better equip the city to provide shelter services, legal support referrals, shelter protocol updates, and materials to promote humanitarian and emergency response relief. Language specialists also provide onsite language support to, in Arabic, Wolaf, French, Spanish, Mandarin, and Cantonese to newly arrived immigrants at the asylum application help center, federal work authorization clinic, humanitarian emergency response relief centers, re-ticketing center, and the Roosevelt Hotel Arrival Center. Next, Moya's English Learning and Support Centers. As we work to build language access across the city, English language proficiency remains a factor in accessing education, employment, health, and social services. That's why my office has launched Moya English Learning and Support Centers located immigrant-strength communities. These centers use our award-winning We Speak NYC curriculum to host beginner and intermediate-level in-person English classes. Our curriculum is unique as it uses filmed stories and workbooks that highlight city services and promote civic engagement. Our centers are hosted at 10 partner, community-based organizations, and we are also scaling collaboration at more than 60 New York City public libraries across New York City. This year, the program is also rolling out a beginner-level curriculum, which had for long been missing from our program's offering. This new curriculum aims to improve access to both language, English language learning, and familiarity with city services. Next, Moya's Community Engagement. Moya's outreach work is done to promote our specific programs, but also to complement outreach work done across city offices and agencies. But important to note here that all city offices and agencies have their own outreach staff, which also conducts and are mainly responsible for doing outreach. In 2023, Moya's External Affairs Team made over 50,000, 54,000 touchpoints with community members, including some in some of the most underserved communities in our city. This includes active participation in resource fairs, tabling, or your rights presentations, and canvassing across the five boroughs. The team also connects immigrant New Yorkers to the help they need by offering real-time support system through in-person, public-facing events and through our phone and email hotline. In 2023, the team responded to nearly 6,000 inquiries for assistance. Moya also led nine immigrant media roundtables to ensure effective information dissemination. The roundtables facilitate information flow to the immigrant communities via hyper-local newspapers and TV stations in their own language. The roundtables also strengthen relationships with immigrant-focused media outlets. In the last year, we have worked with NYC Emergency Management, NYC Cares and Health, Health and Hospitals, Department of Youth and Community Development, NYC Small Business Services, Mayor's Office to End Domestic Gender-Based Violence, Office of Technology Innovation, the Department of Consumer and Worker Protections, and the Civic Engagement Commission and Link NYC. Next, Asylum Seeker Humanitarian Crisis, Moya's role. At the outset of the asylum seeker humanitarian crisis, humanitarian crisis, Moya has, was on the ground welcoming asylum seekers when they started arriving at Port Authority Bus Terminal. We responded immediately, and our multiple teams pulled together to ensure arriving asylum seekers and community groups mobilizing to support them had the assistance from our office. While we are very proud of this work, after many months of this work and myself personally welcoming asylum seekers, we realized this was not sustainable for our office, which was not set up to operate such situations. Therefore, in 2023, the city pivoted to an interagency effort as New York City Emergency Management and Health Plus Hospitals took over the operational management of the humanitarian crisis to welcome asylum seekers. The city also created the Office of Asylum Seeker Operations, or O W A S O, in 2023 to provide overall coordination. You will hear more about this office shortly. Recognizing the importance of connecting immigrant New Yorkers to services, Moya funded community-based organizations as navigator centers to help in this effort. The navigation centers were modeled after our Haitian Response Initiative, which proved to be successful in supporting community organizations working to address the needs of newly arrived immigrants. We've also worked to include one of the most innovative projects, to incubate one of the most innovative projects in response to the arrival of asylum seekers through the Mayor's Fund. Working in partnership with philanthropic partners, we funded nine community-based organizations to launch the Immigrant Peer Navigator Program. The program connects recent arrivals with longtime immigrant mentors to give them tips on surviving and navigating life in New York City, including finding work, housing, and building community connections. ASL I N, as I mentioned before, was developed to complement the work of O W A S O that O W A S O is overseen at the asylum application help center, which you will hear more about shortly. And is meant, ASL I N is meant to serve as a broader population and provide long-term capacity to nonprofit partners on the ground. Addressing this humanitarian crisis also requires engagement with all levels of government. Therefore, in 2023, Moya worked to coordinate local, state, and national advocacy on behalf of immigrant New Yorkers, in part through a coalition of nearly 200 U.S. cities and local governments called Cities for Action. The coalition mobilized to send sign-on letters to the Biden administration to accelerate work permit processing and redesignate or designate 11 countries for temporary protective status. Two of these countries, Cameroon and Venezuela, were redesignated in the weeks that follow, opening access to work authorization, and we continue to advocate for more. In conclusion, finally, in this testimony, I am not covering all of Moya's work as it would be simply too long. Moya's annual report will be available on March 15 and will include a full description of Moya's work. My hope by highlighting these five key areas will give you the sense, the sense of our work and role within city government. Thank you again for calling this hearing, Chair. I look forward to working with the council as the budget process continues. And as I usually do, I want to thank Moya's staff for all their work in the last couple of years. In addition to Jasnia and Tom, Lorena Lucero, Eileen, Derek, and Miguel join me here today. Also, many of them are watching. I also want to give a special shout-out to the many hundreds of city employees and our partners working in response to the humanitarian crisis. Thank you so much. And now I hand it over to Molly Schaefer.
Good morning, Chair Aviles and the Immigration and Finance Committees. My name is Molly Schaefer, and I serve as the interim director of New York City's Mayor's Office of Asylum Seeker Operations, O W A S O. I'm grateful for the opportunity to discuss our office's budget and operational impact on the city's shelter operations. Since April 2022, New York City has been leading the country's response to the migrant emergency, a national humanitarian crisis, providing critical support to over 181,000 individuals who have sought refuge and received assistance from our system, a number that reflects the sheer magnitude of our commitment to humanitarian aid and support. We have led for the last two years with care and compassion, and we cannot lose sight of the extraordinary scale of this emergency. This year, New York City is projected to spend more than $4 billion on asylum seeker operations. The city's 4.5, 05 billion-dollar operation includes five sheltering agencies and more than 20 others supporting the response, a whole-of-government-and-society approach and a monumental undertaking to manage. Every week, between 1,000 and 5,000 new arrivals come into our system. The scale and speed required to provide services and support to people entering the city is unprecedented. When we started this administration, there were 45,000 people in shelter. It took 40 years to build that system, and in less than two years, we have almost tripled that number to 120,700 people, with over 64,000 new arrivals currently in care. More than 181,000 people have come through our intake since spring of 2022, and we have opened more than 217 emergency sites to manage this humanitarian influx. We've provided healthcare, education, work training, jobs, legal support, and much, much more. This is a story of New York City stepping up and managing and doing everything possible with little to no support. This administration announced O W A S O in March 2023 as the central team managing the city's asylum seeker response effort. The office was designed to lead interagency coordination of policy, data, budget, and regulatory considerations, lead advocacy, and lead strategic initiatives necessary to manage this critical mission. One of the proudest achievements of this administration is the first-in-the-nation asylum application help center that opened last summer. Since opening, I'm proud to report that we have completed over 37,000 asylum, work, and temporary protective status applications, helping get people on the pathway to work and legal citizenship. We've opened three satellite sites and partnered with nonprofits, law firms, and the state and federal government. Our centers, staffed with over 150 application assistance immigration attorneys and interpreters, exemplifies New York City's commitment to supporting individuals in their pursuit of the American dream. O W A S O operates with a lean, yet dedicated team of 10 full-time staff with a personnel budget of 1.7 million per year. While O W A S O serves as a vital coordinating entity, leading the city's response, it's important to note that we do not directly manage shelter operations or oversee operational expenses or any contracts related to this work. O W A S O does not have an agency chief contracting officer or manage an O T P S budget. Instead, we collaborate across city agencies to develop policy, support implementation, leverage expertise across multiple sectors, and drive informed decision-making. O W A S O was created to move the city towards a more steady state of operations, and the proof of our progress is in the results. In the preliminary plan, our office spearheaded a 20% reduction on asylum seeker costs, more than 1.7 billion in savings over fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025. And we were able to do that without compromising services. Let me say that again. We were able to accomplish this while responding to an unprecedented crisis more effectively and efficiently. That is a win both for New Yorkers and a win for people in our shelter systems. We take our fiscal responsibility seriously and are now taking a 10% budget cut to ensure we're bringing our costs in line with D H S. In closing, I want to reiterate this administration's unwavering commitment to upholding the values of compassion, efficiency, and accountability as we navigate this complex humanitarian crisis. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you both for your testimony, and we certainly have a lot to get through. So I just ask that we keep our, our answers concise so we can get through the majority of it. And some, some of this might be duplicative of, within your testimony, to disaggregate it to make sure that it's just clearly separated on the record. So thank you, thank you for bearing with us. So let's, let's jump in with you, Commissioner Castro, first. Can you walk us through Moya's role and responsibility?
Thank you, Chair Aviles, for the question. So Moya has a limited scope in terms of our role in responsibility with respect to serving immigrant populations. As I described, we oversee a number of different programs, in particular, our immigration legal programs. But it's important to point out that multiple agencies, including D S S and D Y C D, manage their own immigration legal programs. They are not required to include us in their, in their work, although we often support and promote their work. We specifically focus on the programs that we laid out. I also described in my testimony our work around language access, which is highly collaborative with other agencies because we collect and report on language access plans. And as I described, I've been able to grow the team from three when I first took office to now 20, which was a major priority of ours. And something really to highlight about Moya's, we offer technical assistance and support to those agencies that need it. And we often serve as the champions for language access in city government. I also described our work around English learning, which, again, other agencies manage English learning programs, but our specific program that we oversee looks to provide very practical English learning courses with an emphasis on conversational English and also to educate immigrant communities on city services and engage them in civic participation. We do this in partnership with C V Os and libraries and other institutions.
So, I'm sorry, Commissioner, just, could you give me, could you give me a, if we think about it as a pie chart, a general sense of the breakdown of the work that your very small but mighty team engages in? We have direct service, we have technical assistance, we have advocacy. How would you characterize the distribution of work that your office manages? If you could, obviously, it's not going to be specific.
Yeah, I think might be helpful to describe our staffing structure. So we have currently three staff overseeing legal services, Tom included. Most of our work on legal services is outsourced, meaning that we contract with nonprofit providers to do this work. Our English learning program is staffed by three individuals. Our language access staff, as I mentioned.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, the, the English programs are staffed by three?
Yes.
Individuals, okay.
Yes.
Three for language access, three for legal services?
Twenty for language access, 11 for policy, and 15 for external affairs. If you want a further breakdown, Jas can provide, but I just wanted to give you a sense of our staffing, to give you a sense of, you know, a small but mighty team takes a lot of work. We're only able to achieve so much because of our work in partnership with nonprofit providers.
Sure. So for the, for the record, I'm so sorry. I just want to make sure I'm clear, and this is helpful because what we see in the budget documents is that Moya only has six?
Correct.
Full-time staff. So the 15, the 20, the 30, where, where? So the 15, the 20, the 30, where are all these people housed? So if you would run through, what are the Moya staffers that fall under your line item?
Correct. And I'll let Jas break down the agency partnership lines, but just to say, this is something that many mayoral offices, you know, deal with.
Sure, sure, sure.
We have mayoral staff, but also agency partners.
I just want clarity, just clarity. So are the three, are the three language service supervisors, I'll call them, I'm sure that's not the correct term, do they belong to your line item?
I'll let Jas break down. I believe those are decast lines, but I'll let Jas.
Okay. Let's start with the positions that belong specifically to Moya, and then I'd like to hear the breakdown of the positions that I get, that are working under your purview, but obviously distributed at different agencies.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you for the question. So historically, you know, the way that our budget has been set up and continues to be set up is spread throughout three agencies, so under the mayor's office, under DSS, as well as decast. And in all three of these agencies, we have both OTPS and PS that fall under our budget. So our budget is spread out throughout these three agencies. In terms of headcount, correct, under the mayor's office, you see three lines there. Under DSS, we have 11 lines. Under decast, we have 43 lines.
Sir, can you speak a little louder into the mic? It might be me old age.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Better?
Yeah, better, thank you. DSS?
So mayor's office, six, DSS, 11, decast, 43, 43 lines. And then I just want to note, you know, we do have a partnership also with RFQNI, and we currently do have one line, you know, under RFQNI. So in total, we have 61 lines. And again, these are, you know, spread out.
Across the agencies?
Yes, but they do belong to Moya.
Got it, okay. That's very helpful. And in terms of the roles of the six staff members that are under Moya's purview, direct purview, those are the legal supervisor, can you just run through those six?
So under the mayor's office line, currently, we have the commissioners' line, our chief of staff, our deputy commissioner of external affairs, our assistant commissioner of external affairs, and our director of communications. And then the sixth line listed there, you know, is currently being utilized at another mayoral office.
Great. And so for the, in terms of all the other positions, can you provide us a budget with those positions on a crosswalk?
Sorry, I had it on mute. Under the PS, give me one sec, I can give you the breakdown. For the mayor's office, right, for those six lines mentioned, for FY24, we're budgeted For DSS, for those lines, 11 lines, we're budgeted for $904,88. And then for decast, for those 43 lines, we have $2,936,031 in PS.
Great. And the QNI position?
Roughly, you know, because we have to pay fees, admin fees, roughly, we're budgeted for $126K for that line.
Great. Thank you. In terms of the commission, I'd like to thank you for being specific in your testimony. I'd love to hear, I think the questions today just want to drill down on much more specificity. You did mention a number of different programs, and certainly your advocacy around TPS. Can you, can you walk me through maybe the three priority recommendations that your office has driven that have been adopted and implemented by the city? And it could be in any agency.
Good question.
We can go back to it, but I would like specifically to understand, policy is a very significant part of your role here across agencies. I'd love to understand what specific policies have you been able to implement as Moya across the city?
Yeah, so I'm thinking through, you know, the many instances we've advocated for policies. You mentioned, and I like to provide a number of examples that I think are important to the current moment we're in. So the first of, the first one and most immediate is advocating for TPS as a position that the city takes is quite important because, as you may be aware of, the asylum process is quite arduous in time, and it takes time for people to achieve work authorization, whereas with TPS, people are able to access work authorization quicker. I believe this is a core aspect of our advocacy. In the last year, we've met with a number of individuals, which we've communicated that it would be helpful for them to advocate this with the White House. And the expansion of the Venezuelan TPS, a redesignation of Venezuela TPS, I think was a significant win for immigrant advocates and communities. And when you look at our role in advocating for it, it was quite significant, not just with the mayor's direct advocacy, my direct advocacy, but also with our work with our coalition partners across the country. And I mention this because I am now advocating for us to advocate for Ecuadorian TPS. And by extending TPS to Ecuadorians, I think it would significantly impact recently arrived immigrants to our cities. Second, recently, I've been working very closely with our asylum seeker response leadership team. Moya will be taking on an increased role in building the capacity of immigrant-serving nonprofits, especially those immigrant-serving nonprofits that have been working closely with non-traditional populations, meaning informal workers and documented workers and so forth. I think pivoting to working closer with those nonprofit providers and those community organizations is an important step for the city. It is now one of our major pillars in our strategic plan, and it's something that Moya will take an active leadership in, of course, working with our multiple offices that provide assistance to nonprofit organizations and so forth. And thirdly, I will be co-chairing our advocacy efforts, which, again, will become a pillar that I think is important for the city of New York to establish, which will, which I've designed to establish a communication strategy, legislative strategy, and a coalition-building strategy in order for us to more effectively move us forward in our advocacy as a city around the issue of asylum seekers and newly arrived immigrants.
And is that advocacy directed to the state and federal government, or are you talking about directed at our city and the way our city is operating?
Correct, particularly to the federal government, but certainly the state. I think centralizing all our work around the advocacy that we are conducting towards the federal government with an emphasis on supporting recently arrived immigrants. And of course, the city is quite important. You heard from our budget director yesterday, we were awarded roughly $150 million by the federal government in support of this situation. We spend much more than that, so...
And we haven't drawn down not a third of it. So we have some operational issues to address there.
So in terms of advocacy, I think there's much more to be done for the federal government to support our efforts. And like I said, in terms of legislative and action, legislative work by Congress and action by the White House, I think it's important for us to really hone in on like what we can be working on as a city government. And also coalition building. I think bringing communities together to partner with and effectively advocate is quite important. So I will say those three things are very timely and something that I had been pushing for, and I think we're making progress on.
Okay, so in terms of the direct services that Moya provides, could you just quickly tell me the direct services that Moya provides? And I know, again, it was in your testimony.
Well, most of my testimony is on the direct services that Moya provides. Like I said, it breaks down to, into these key areas that I described, immigration legal services, English learning, and support services, but also internal work around language access, which is quite important. I often say that our role is really twofold, external and internal. Our internal work is obviously something that most people don't get to see, but it's quite important, and we think of it as a service to our sister agencies and offices. But with respect to services to immigrant communities, again, it's limited in scope, and it is not something that is solely a responsibility of Moya, but of all city government to be able to serve our immigrant communities.
Right, but for Moya, the direct services to immigrant community members is...
Immigration legal?
It's legal.
Immigration legal, English learning, and we have general support services, which involve Moya rights workshops, for instance, connecting, and again, we do this mainly through partnerships with nonprofits, connecting, for instance, Dreamers to New York State Dream Act applications and so forth. But that's the three pillars.
And the hotline.
Correct.
And the hotline. I'd like to recognize, we've been joined by Councilmember Botcher and Councilmember Joseph. Thank you for joining us, apologies. So in terms, what, I guess back to the funding piece, what additional funding has Moya requested in this fiscal year and the out years?
Well, we have yet to request funding. We will be in conversation around our needs with OMB and with City Hall, but as we engage in this process, we'll continue to discuss with them our specific needs and our work.
So can you tell me what your needs are?
Well, as I mentioned, we have a variety of very specific programs aimed at immigrant communities. It is not the sole responsibility of Moya to serve immigrant communities, but these programs, we believe, are very effective, specifically at reaching the hardest-to-reach immigrant communities. We are reissuing an RFP and so forth, so we are doing quite a lot with what we have. And I think it's important for us to highlight that this work is effectively done in partnership with nonprofits in coordination.
So what legal, I'm so sorry, Commissioner, I don't mean to be rude at all. I just know we have very limited time, and I'm not even past my first page. So let's walk through, in terms of legal services, what additional funding does Moya need to meet the need?
Well, again, if we're speaking about meeting the need of serving the 1.13 million non-citizens, that is not possible with the funding that we have, of course, if the intent is to serve all those who need it, right? We have very specific funding that can serve a small portion of that population.
Right.
And it's important for us to target the funding to where it is most needed, so we often serve folks who are low income, who are unemployed, who live in specific...
Do you have any sense of how much you, obviously, there's the moonshot, there's everyone, and I would love nothing more, and I know you would love nothing more, but that's not the reality. What is the stepped-up need that we would need to be effective? What are you advocating for? We're in budget season, there are no numbers anywhere to be found. What is it that you need to step up to meet even a full fraction? What is it that Moya is advocating for? How much money do you need to do the most effective job that you can do in terms of legal services?
Well, again, we will be engaged in conversation with OMB and City Hall about the needs of the specific programs, but I will say I've been a longtime advocate for federal universal legal representation. I asked our federal partners...
Right, we're in a city, Commissioner, we're in a city hearing around budget, and there are specific needs that I think we all agree we have not been able to meet, and we do have budget constraints. Nevertheless, we have need, right, an increased need. It would be great for the public to understand what is Moya advocating for in terms of increasing that legal need. We also know, in the context of legal services, that we are not paying properly for those services. They're undervalued, and so it would be nice to understand very concretely. I know you're negotiating, nevertheless, it would be nice to understand. We are advocating this year for $50 million in legal services. We are advocating for this amount for these services. These are the things that we are pushing for, and I can't seem to get an actual concrete number from you. I don't know if that's because you don't know it, or you don't want to put it on the table, or you haven't quite decided, and I would just love for you to have the opportunity to say, this is what we need, this is what we're fighting for.
So generally, our office, and that's probably true for most mayoral offices or agencies, don't come with a specific set of...
It's a problem. It's a budget hearing.
Yes, we don't have, we don't have, we don't bring budget advocacy to the...
To the budget hearing. I understand that, that's clear. In terms of, do you have any outstanding requests to Moya, to, excuse me, not to Moya, yourself, to OMB?
No.
Okay. Can you tell us where the funding for We Speak NYC is coming from, and is it housed under DYCD?
I'll let Jas respond there.
Thank you for the question. So that funding is not housed under DYCD. The funding is housed under our budget in decast.
So it's housed under decast?
Yes.
And is this part of adult literacy funding?
Oh, excuse me, under DSS.
DSS. You have a hard job trying to track all these different agencies. Is this funding part of the adult literacy funding?
It's not.
Okay, separate and apart, okay. Has, well, I think I know the answer to this, has Moya requested additional funding for Action NYC?
No.
No, okay. Is there dedicated staff to support legal services at the agency level? If yes, how much is budgeted, is the budgeted headcount, and how many positions are funded?
Jas will respond to that.
So we work closely with our, you know, partner agencies, especially those that run legal services, and I can let Tom sort of talk about more in terms of like how we collaborate with them. But currently, we have three staffers, including Tom, that lead the legal services work in our office, as well as... as well as three vacancies under that portfolio. And again, you know, one of the things that I would like to mention is that while that's the case and it's a small team, right, you know, we always work across teams to be able to lead the work. But I can let Tom sort of talk about our, you know, how we collaborate with.
And what the roles are that are vacant currently?
Program manager positions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Aviles, Commissioner and Jas. So within Moya's immigration legal service programs are housed Action NYC, the Action NYC hotline, the Haitian Response Initiative, the Immigrant Rights Workshop, and the Rapid Response Legal Collaborative, as well as the newly created Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network, or ASLAN, as the Commissioner described in his testimony. They each involve interaction with various agencies. Our primary partner is HRA and the Office of Civil Justice, who, HRA holds the contracts within their agency, and we serve as programmatic manager. And that's the case across most, if not all, of our programs. Moya takes the lead programmatic management role, and the agency provides contract and fiscal support, as well as acting as the vehicle for that procurement.
So is there an RFP or a concept paper that's been issued for the immigrant legal services, such as Action NYC or the Immigrant Opportunities Initiative?
I can't speak to the Immigrant Opportunities Initiative. That sits under OCJ, the Office of Civil Justice at HRA. Moya did issue, in collaboration with HRA, a concept paper for Action NYC, renamed the Moya Legal Support Centers Program in last November, and held a public information session, as well as received public comment and question. We can't discuss much about that procurement because it's currently underway. But any updates can be found by the public in the city's passport system. Organizations can register to view the status of that procurement there.
But in terms of the general parameters of the program, could you walk us through just the general parameters of the concept paper?
Sure, the Moya Legal Support Centers Program continues to prioritize community-rooted immigration legal services. Many of the same services under Action NYC will be offered, including application assistance and representation in both straightforward and some complex immigration legal cases. The model continues to prioritize the immigrant navigator approach of having individuals who have the cultural and linguistic competencies to be able to meet people where they are in their community and provide them with legal services there. It's a, the model prioritizes trust and centers the client. And our Action NYC providers, over the course of years, have served tens of thousands of people in this way.
Thank you. Did you receive provider feedback on the concept paper? Do you have a sense of what that feedback was telling you?
Yes, our team has reviewed and is actively considering all feedback received by the public in the process. And in the typical procurement process under HRA and most agencies, after the release of the actual request for proposals or RFP, there's another period during which the public can submit questions and comments.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Hanif. Councilmember, I'm happy to pause my questions if you're pressed for time. No, okay, okay, thank you for joining us. Has Moya met with legal professionals to hear their concerns and advocate with the administration on their behalf?
Moya is in regular contact with our contracted immigration legal service providing partners. We have regular calls with our Action NYC partners, as well as individual contractors on the regular course of program management, be it monthly, bi-monthly, whatever it might be. In terms of the procurement, however, we must be extremely careful and adhere to the process that exists under HRA. And that includes minimizing or eliminating any communication with public organizations about the procurement while it's happening.
Sure, but in terms of, in terms of what the advocate legal professionals have relayed to Moya in terms of needs, are there any salient responses that they have been providing to the agency above and beyond what is happening in the procurement that is important to note?
The feedback received to date is being considered by Moya, and we can't quite.
Oh, you can't, okay.
But later on in the process, after the release of the initial procurement, there is a question and comment period during which Moya will respond. And I will say that during the course of, prior to the release of the concept paper, Commissioner Castro visited many community-based organizations within the communities as well, and has taken their feedback into account in the, you know, the formation of this model and this approach.
Got it. I've definitely seen Commissioner Castro out in many, many communities. In terms of, can you tell us a little bit about how Moya manages Action NYC and the New York citizenship, as well as the Rapid Response Legal Collaborative?
Go ahead, Tom.
Management is fairly routine. We make sure that invoices are received and paid on time. We make sure that deliverables, included in the scope of work, are met by the providers. Where not, we provide feedback and support to ensure that they can achieve deliverables. And we offer any other type of support. We also gather feedback through our partners regarding city services and resources. As they interact with community members, oftentimes they'll flag that a certain service or resource is not available, and then we work internally to overcome that barrier.
And has there ever been an instance where corrective action was rendered in any of these programs? And/or changes in contract or termination in contract?
In the current contracts, no.
Can you explain what the New York City Citizenship Program is?
NY Citizenship is currently housed under HRA. It's a program that provides naturalization application assistance to immigrant New Yorkers through a direct outreach model overseen by the Office of Refugee and Immigrant Assistance at HRA.
And if I can add, Tom, just to clarify, NYC Citizenship is not overseen by Moya? That has, the oversight and operations of this program is now fully over at DSS?
At DSS.
Just to clarify.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to pass it over to my colleague, Councilmember Botcher, for questions.
And Chair, if I may just clarify, going back to your question as to whether we have or have requested more funding, additional funding for Action NYC, I responded no, which is true, only because we are in the beginning stages of discussions with OMB with respect to our budget. As you know, over the last year, we have been in trying to find savings and undergoing through the PEG process. Again, the needs are tremendous, and we'll engage based on the guidance we are provided by City Hall and OMB on how we go about requesting and seeking additional funds. Thank you.
Councilmember Botcher.
Thank you so much. I'd love to give you the opportunity to talk about the debit cards for asylum seekers, the pilot program to distribute prepaid debit cards to asylum seekers so they could purchase their own food at supermarkets, bodegas, convenience stores, grocery stores. Has this program started yet, the pilot program?
Molly, what respond to that?
Thank you for that question. So it has not started yet, but we expect it to start in the next couple of weeks. And we're really excited because it allows us to really save some money and it pilots something innovative to get money back into the local communities.
There's a lot of misinformation flying around about the program. One of the pieces of misinformation that I hear a lot is that these debit cards could be used anywhere. Tell us about where they can and can't be used and what restrictions are in place to prevent them from being used where they shouldn't be used.
So the way that the card works is that it has certain restrictions of types of vendors. So it only can be used in groceries, delis, or bodegas. And so specifically on food or baby supplies or other supplies needed for kids or pregnant individuals. And so, and we make everybody sign an affidavit and make everybody understand exactly what they're for.
If the card can't be used in anywhere but those food service establishments, is the affidavit just like a extra step?
Yes, we want to make sure that everyone understands what they're getting the card for and what we expect when being into that program.
So once the pilot program starts, how long will it continue until you make the determination whether or not it should be expanded?
So we're going to be working with our, with OMB, we're going to be working with HPD. We're going to really be looking at the data to see how it plays out, how the families are using it, and make decisions based on that. It is an initial pilot of 500 households, but we will continue to monitor the data and see if we need to make any adjustments.
Have you been consulted on the criteria to select these 500 households? Where will they be residing?
So the families that we are going to be picking are families in our HANNIC program, which are families in hotel rooms throughout the city in 28-day stays. This is because right now they get deliveries from DOT GO. It will be cheaper to do this and allow them to have some choice in what kind of foods they want and allow them to buy the supplies that they need.
And the reason that it's cheaper is because the food that you're having delivered to these shelters is not being consumed every day. There's, every day there's some that isn't being consumed, and that's money wasted, right?
So that's part of it. The other part of it is this isn't, these aren't shelters. These are hotel rooms that people are in throughout the city, and therefore, part of the cost is delivery. So we deliver food every three days. This will allow us to not do that anymore. And so the families will be able to buy food for themselves in the local communities.
In your FY '25 budget, do you include any line items for this program?
I have to get back to you on that, I don't know.
Thank you.
Just to continue on, just quickly, why did the administration pursue this through an emergency contract rather than bidding out?
Because we wanted to start saving money as quickly as possible. I think every, every type of model is different in this crisis. We're running more than 216 sites, and we have people throughout the city. And so we're always looking to do things more effectively and more efficiently and try new innovative things out that can actually save us money. And so we wanted to get this on board as quickly as we possibly can to sort of, to get rid of the delivery that we were doing.
And there are claims that the program will save the city $7.2 million. Is that true and based on what information?
So right now, we are estimating that it will save us about $600,000 a month. I would have to defer to OMB about how that works out exactly.
And does that mean the DOT GO contracts are getting altered? Because isn't that baked into the DOT GO contracts for food and delivery?
So right now, DOT GO is doing the delivery to the HANNIC hotels. So this would, if this works out, this would replace the DOT GO deliveries.
So do we claw back that money from those contracts?
I'd have to get back to you on that specific question. But yes, we would save money by doing this instead of something else.
And in terms of, can you speak to the track record of this company in providing this kind of service? Has it been used in the city before?
So the city, so we are constantly talking to hundreds of different vendors. This vendor has been talking to in a bunch of city agencies. It also did work in other cities. It went through an extensive vetting process by MOCs and our legal controls. So we stand by what they're offering.
Right, but they haven't received, this is their first contract with New York City.
This is their first contract in New York City, correct?
Okay, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Joseph, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner, always good to see you. Thank you for the hard work. But you know, we can always do much, much better for the immigrant community. So I'm interested in your adult literacy. Was Moya included in the adult literacy RFP conversation?
We have not participated. Like I said earlier, the agencies are not required to include us, but we are certainly available to consult with them as needed.
How would they know to cater this to the particular communities that we're trying to target if you're not part of the conversation?
I'm not sure how they want about it, but each agency has a process to do so. I have offered to help disseminate the RFP and support as needed.
And that's one of the conversations. I'm always saying agencies should be talking to each other so the delivery of services are even much better. Can you speak about adult literacy services at the HERCs? When was the programming start? And which specific site currently provide adult education classes? How many do you have? How many students you've already served?
Yes, now Molly can respond to that.
So I have to get back to you on the exact sites. We had five sites in '23, and we have six sites now that are doing it through DYCD.
You don't know how many people you've served already?
I'd have to get back to you on those exact numbers, and I also defer to DYCD on their effectiveness there.
Okay, thank you. I have a quick question around TPS. So how many of the countries have you served already? What's the, do you have the list of countries that are qualified for TPS?
So I don't have the list with me right now, but we, anybody who walks into our asylum application help center can get help for TPS because we do a personal assessment of what that person needs and decide if they're eligible for TPS, if they're eligible for work authorization at that point, or if asylum is the right pathway and if it makes sense for them to.
Is that the same rule that applies for the humanitarian parole as well?
We also look at their humanitarian parole paperwork and see if it makes them eligible for expedited work pathways, correct? And that all happens at our asylum application help center and our three other satellites.
And how many have you filed so far? And from the 2023 to 2024 calendar year?
We have filed, our center has filed more than 37,000 applications. And that also includes things that are not TPS work authorization or.
The I-94.
Yeah, like we've done, we've done a, whatever we can when we get people into that site to try to figure out what makes the most sense for their pathway.
And do you keep track? And how many have been successful to date?
We, we, people are not required to come back to us and tell them. We're not doing full representation. We're trying to get people set up as quickly as we possibly can and make sure that they hit their one-year asylum deadline. So we're not, this is all pro se. And so they're not required to come back to us and tell them where they are. We do know that someone came back and said that they got asylum, which was really exciting for us. But that's really about the relationship between the asylum application helper and the client. They are not required to tell us if they've gotten asylum to this point. We do know that we've been calling people back for work authorization, and we do know that more than 2,000 have gotten work authorization at this point.
And you help them, do you also help them to find employment?
So we work with SBS, and we refer anybody who's applied for work or has work authorization. We refer them to SBS and the Workforce One Centers, and we refer them to the state work program. And then we work with the state and our SBS. And then we work with the state and our SBS partners to call people back, do some job skills assessment, and then connect them to jobs as available.
How many have you referred already?
We've referred about 10,000 people, probably more at this point. I have to get back to you on the exact number, to our state partners and to our folks downstate in SBS.
How do you do your outreach for communities to know that they, you have the service to, whether they apply, they're eligible for humanitarian parole, or how do they get their TPS papers in order? How are you doing the outreach?
So the asylum application help center and our satellites is really focused on the people in our care, so it's really focused on our shelter residents. And so that we do onsite. So the second that you walk through our doors at our arrival center, we ask a series of questions about your legal status and about your paperwork so that we know what pathway you're in. And then we can, shelter staff is able to connect you to these sites. My colleagues in Moya have the more, the broader landscape of people not in our shelter system and sort of connect them to legal support.
How does the 30, 30 to 60-day rule impact asylum seekers, I mean, TPS recipients and humanitarian parole? Share just two more, please.
So we, we have had more than 60% of our, of people leave our shelters at this point, and that, we've also had a fair amount of people before the 30 and 60-day policies came into place. We try to do everything we can while people are in our care and connect them to the, whatever we, the appointments we have. We also tell people about change of addresses. We try to make it as easy as possible to come get mail. So we try to make this as easy as possible while they're in our care.
Yeah, because immigration wants a permanent address as to where folks get their mail. They don't want to be chasing anybody down. So that's why I'm asking about the 30, 60-day rule. That's why I'm asking for that. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And then I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Hanif. Oh, and we've been joined by Councilmember Burrow.
Thank you, Chair Aviles, and welcome. I want to follow up about the debit cards. So these are for families in hotel rooms who are in, who are staying for 28 days. Could you just clarify that? They stay per, their full duration at the shelter is for 28 days?
So this is a hotel room, yes, for 28-day stays?
28-day stays. And then the program for this debit card is for 500 families in total?
500 families in the pilot, yes.
In the pilot. And each of them, 28 days?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And then how did the $600,000 savings come about? How was that determined?
So you have to, I'd have to come back to you and check with my colleagues at OMB who helped us make these determinations.
And are other savings being determined at this time?
We are constantly looking at savings for food, for everything across the system. I mean, we're working on a 10% peg at this time, and we've met our 20% peg targets.
Got it. The peg in the preliminary budget release in January anticipated spending on asylum seekers by 20%. The next round of peg cuts in February cut the budget an additional 10%. We're talking now about around $2.5 billion. What specifically is causing this decrease?
Sorry, can, what decrease?
The, the spending on asylum seekers. So I just described the peg in the preliminary budget in January, which was 20%, and then the next round in February, an additional 10%.
So we worked really hard with our colleagues at OMB, with our colleagues across the system to reprocure some contracts. H&amp;H reprocured a bunch of their services to get better, better costs from vendors. We reduced staffing in certain places where we didn't necessarily need it, and really to make sure that more things were in line with our DHS sites. And we really focused on efficiencies across the system to meet both our 20% peg, and we will see how we meet our 10% peg.
How are you determining the, these like staff efficiencies and the system-wide changes?
So we want to ensure that anybody who comes into any of our sites has the same experience and has the same set of services. And so it's really making sure that all of our systems are balanced.
And is that with like an evaluation? Like what's, what's being specifically done to get that standardized?
So it's, it's a scalpel. It's not a, it's not a hacksaw. We're, we're looking at each individual site and ensuring that we're getting everything in the right order and that it makes sense for that particular site. Because no two sites are the same, you know? They might have different means of egress. We might need one more fire guard here than in another place, but we're really taking a comprehensive view of each site and what is needed for that specific site.
Yeah, that's, that's important, particularly with what we've been reading about some providers. And so definitely curious about how specific providers are getting more streamlined or standardized within the purview of the broader DHS or OEM or the other agencies heading. If there is a standardization, that is very important, particularly because many of the providers have not, to this degree, to this scale, managed migrants in this population. In my district, we are opening a 400-bed facility in the coming weeks, and we had a community forum just last night, and lots of curiosity and concern about this specific provider have never, having never managed a population of 400 residents. And so how are, how is a city managing or assessing and then, and then making the choice to go into business with providers that have not managed? And, and taking, making that choice to, to go into business with providers, new providers, such as the ones you've already, you're already doing business with?
So this is an unprecedented emergency. We've never had this amount of people coming and coming into our shelter system at this scale for this prolonged period of time. We really are trying to focus on nonprofits and raising nonprofit capacity. As Commissioner Castro said earlier today, his team is really taking a lead on also helping us figure out how to build up capacity, especially for those nonprofits that might work with traditionally, non-traditional populations but may not have the capacity or the expertise to potentially house them, let's say. And so it's, it's constantly a matching of what are the providers who have capacity? What are the providers who know how to do this, who have the expertise? How do we match that? And how do we help both of those groups get to the point where they can provide the best care for the individuals? And what kind of technical assistance can we provide to them?
Chair, I just want to ask one set of questions. Could you provide a, a program update on the city's legal service efforts for asylum seekers? Would like to know specifically how many TPS asylum and work authorization applications have been filed so far? How many have been accepted, rejected, and how many are pending?
So I can only talk about the work that we have been doing in our asylum application help center, which is, you know, something that we are, that we are actively doing. Obviously, there's a lot more work happening through ASLAN and the other broader legal service provider networks. But through our asylum application help centers, we've applied for, or we've filed more than 11,630 asylum applications, more than 15,339 work authorization applications, more than 10,745 TPS applications, and the total across all of that is 37,714 of those three categories. We've also done other light-touch legal help there, too. We've also been calling everyone back who's applied for asylum more than six months ago to see if we can get them in for work authorization. And we've been working with our federal partners to both prioritize our packages, but also help file more efficiently the work authorization and TPS applications.
And then how much money in FY '24 has been allocated to these efforts from the city?
So in the preliminary budget, there was $11 million. We are actively expanding. The state has committed 40 million, but we are working with them on that.
And how much is allocated in FY '25 preliminary to these specific efforts?
So in the preliminary budget was 11 million. I, I will give you an update on the executive plan when we have it.
And then, and then is there money allocated for the continuation of the asylum seeker application center and the satellite sites for Blitz Clinic collaborations with the federal government?
So that is part of our satellites. One of our satellites is specifically the federal, the federal clinic, and we're really excited to figure out how they can stay for asylum.
Great, okay. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Burrow.
Thank you very much. Yesterday with OMB, there was a discussion about the state giving you some money, giving the city some money. And I think 40-something has come in, but there's still more paperwork to be completed to get the balance. Who's working on that? Because apparently it's very complicated. Having done this in the past myself with the previous mayor, I know what it's like. But what's going on with that money?
So I think you're talking about the federal money, not the...
No, this is state. The governor, according to OMB, the governor gave, I think it was 137 if I remember correctly, and 40 has been accounted for, but there's still more to fill out.
So I'd have to get back to you. I don't know about the state money.
Is there federal money you're saying is still to be...
I think it's the federal money.
All right. Is it federal?
It goes to the state.
It goes to the state, okay. Go ahead. What's going on? Why can't we fill out those forms?
So OMB is managing the reimbursement with the state, or sorry, with the federal government there. I will say that they've made, there is restrictive guidelines on how we draw down that makes it harder for us, makes it harder for other cities who have publicly said that it's hard...
Chicago said that, I heard.
Chicago and Portland also said it, and we've been talking to other cities who have similar experiences. So we are working on it, and we are continuing to talk to the federal government about ways to make it less restrictive.
Okay. Again, some of the for-profit, do you know how many for-profits? I'm not a big supporter, I'll be honest with you, whether it's Cherokee, is not my favorite, as you know. I know it's an MBWE, but I would like to see New York City nonprofits be doing the work. So how many for-profits do you have? How many are not from New York City doing this work?
So I will get back to you...
Cherokee's one of them, I know.
Yeah, I have to get back to you on the...
They don't have a contract yet.
No, the exact numbers on that, but what I will say is that we hold the want to get more nonprofits involved. The majority of our system is currently nonprofits, and we continue working towards that goal.
I know, but I'm just saying you keep giving more to some of these for-profits. You'll let us know how many for-profits are involved?
I have to get back to you.
And what the dollar figures are?
I have to get back to you.
In terms of, I want to thank health and hospitals because young people in school have been staying in Manhattan if they are in a Manhattan school. And I want to thank, you know, credit where credit is due. My concern is, okay, so now 60 days, I'm still in Manhattan, I'm still at PS87, but then I'm going to get another 60-day notice, I assume, from the next place I'm living. Can we cut that out and just stop all this 60-day nonsense? Because A, I don't think it's good for the families, but also what's the cost? I did ask this of OMB. What's the cost of keep this churning going?
So at this point, 51% of our families are leaving before the 60, either before the 60th day or on the 60th day. So that means 49% are coming and reapplying for a shelter...
Some are coming back, however. Just so you know, they leave and then they do call the school, because I happen to know every single, you can imagine, Manhattan family that has called, because they all called me and tell me. So they're coming back in some cases. Go ahead, so you got 49% to house?
Yeah, no, but, but that, the stat that I said includes the people who came back after a couple of weeks. It includes, it came back to shelter.
Oh, so you got 49%?
It's 49% who are still in care now.
Okay.
I don't have the exact numbers of what it costs to have people reapply, but we have the arrival center open 24/7. We actually were able to reduce staffing there as part of our peg process and not change anything about operations. And so that's, that's the, that's where people are coming back.
Okay, I'm just saying, can we not do the 60-day churning again? That's my question. Is that something that's being considered? Now you have your 49%. I don't think you're going to get this big wave. I know you think you might. Everybody has to worry. I got it. But before, can we not plan not to have more churning?
So we plan in surges and valleys as you, as...
I know, I could give the speech.
And, and the border, we can't control the border, we can't control inflow. The only thing we can control are people when they're in our sites and how we can help them figure out the next steps for them and their families.
We also have to be thinking about good policy, in my opinion.
So we, we need all the tools in our toolbox. This is another tool in our toolbox, and we're continuing always to evaluate it and make data-driven decisions.
All right. DOT GO, when is their contract up? I never understand what the contract, you know, as you know, I have been criticizing them from day one. They know that. The lobbyist calls me every minute. The question is, obviously, you're saving money. I think that the notion of having the debit cards is a good one, but I don't quite understand how it works in terms of DOT GO not serving food at that location. So when is that contract up? And what is the RFP opportunity for whomever would take over?
So there's not currently an RFP on the streets, but we are, we are looking at ways to improve our, our processes, and that will include potential RFPs for all the services in our shelters, depending on which shelter.
So we don't, it could be forever, DOT GO, basically. I'm asking.
So the DOT GO contract is not forever. I'd have to get back to you on the exact date, but there's a couple of different contracts.
Okay, and then just finally, the issue of what goes on. We've got legal services, OSHA, hopefully, English language. Some of these dollars that we're saving, could they, could they not go to so that during the day, people have more opportunities to take advantage of some of these programs? Just so you know, I'm in the hotels all day long, and so is my staff. So we know there's not a lot going on.
So we would love more opportunities to partner with you to get some of, you know, discretionary dollars for OSHA training. We want to, it's not just the city dollars that can go to ESL workforce training. We also need philanthropy dollars. We also need federal dollars. We also need state dollars. I think we're working on all these levers to expand those programs.
Take some of that DOT GO money and, and use it for this. Take some of that DOT GO money and use it for some of these other opportunities. Is that not possible?
There's, we have to, we have to take into account our entire budget. We're currently working on our 10% peg. And then we also are really looking forward to figuring out ways to expand those programs and make sure that we're giving people all the supports they need while they're in our care.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Burrow. I'm looking forward to seeing the $600,000 savings on the DOT GO contract go away somehow. So we'd like to see that reduction. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Krishnan has joined us. Councilmember, do you want to, okay. Councilmember.
Thank you so much, Chair Aviles. Nice to see you all here, too. Commissioner, good to see you, and thank you to your whole team as well for all your great work. I know, and I think this is really a point, what mentioning, even before, we saw such a large increase of asylum seekers coming here, the need for more support from this administration for immigration-related legal services, bilingual services, language access, and resources for Moya to continue that work has always been crucial. And that need is only even more exacerbated, given what we're seeing now, too. But with, so, and that's why this budget hearing today is very important, because I think we are falling far short from City Hall, this administration, in providing the supports for asylum seekers and immigrants. Instead, what we're seeing is them being scapegoated and blamed as a reason to cut support services that benefit not only asylum seekers, but all New Yorkers. And that's really shocking to see, and also just a false narrative that we shouldn't be spreading. I have a few questions in particular on some programs related to that theme. One was in regards to IDNYC. This is a program that's been crucial for so many immigrant New Yorkers. Of course, you know, my district in Jackson Heights and Elmhurst, since the very rollout of the program, where my predecessor, Councilmember Danny Drum, was one of the prime sponsors on the bill and really pushed for, it's been incredibly beneficial program in events that we've done for asylum seekers and resource fairs. We've also really pushed and had at IDNYC there in any way that we can incorporate them into our work. But in the first four months of fiscal 2024, IDNYC cards issued decreased by 6,884 compared to the same month in FY '23. compared to the same month in FY23. The number of applications processed also decreased in the first four months. But this program, as I mentioned, is the only opportunity for undocumented New Yorkers to access photo ID. Yet, HRA's budget for IDNYC is reduced by 1 million in the preliminary budget compared to the adopted budget of FY24. Can you explain the reason for these decreases?
Thank you, Councilmember. I really can't speak to the budget decreases. IDNYC is now totally, completely overseen by DSS. Our role is really limited to supporting some other outreach work. But you're right that this is a really critical program for immigrant New Yorkers. As an advocate, I worked to establish this program. Part of the reason why Moya is working closely with OWASO, but separately, is because we want to continue to reach out to those longer-term immigrant New Yorkers who've had challenging time accessing IDNYC. So, we continue to partner with DSS to do outreach in various communities and ensure that they're connected with the ID. But again, I have to defer to my colleagues at DSS on these questions.
And what about the delay and the inability for people to make appointments? We've seen this with respect to other public benefits as well. These benefits and these programs are only as good as people have access, so long as people have access to them, as with all the laws and policies we create. And it's particularly true for immigrant communities in particular, that not creating accessible programs, making sure we're cutting through the bureaucracy, is denying people the benefits that they deserve and are entitled to. And so, in this situation, what are the reasons that people are unable to make appointments? Is it a staff shortage? What is the shortage? Why is it that it's been so difficult to get people access to appointments for IDNYC?
Yes, my understanding is the surge, the increase in the demand for IDNYC. Again, I have to defer to my colleagues at DSS for the technical reasons. But what we've done as Moya, we've partnered with local community-based organizations to establish office hours to come in and help members of these communities navigate the system and successfully connect with IDNYC. Our outreach staff is out throughout New York City, trying to help people navigate city services, and this is primarily the one that we assist with.
Does HRA bring you into these conversations to coordinate strategy, rollout, reducing delays, funding? Is that something that you all and HRA are in close coordination and communication on?
Not at the moment. As I said earlier, agencies are not required to bring us into these conversations. However, we're available and happy to support as needed.
And I'll just say that we work closely with them to ensure that people know about New York City IDs in our shelter systems, and that if there's any misinformation about what it can be used for, that we're helping people understand what it can and cannot be used for.
Thank you. That's a problem. And I think for an administration that prides itself on efficiency, one of the most basic ways to increase efficiency is to actually increase inter-agency communication, especially over a program that so clearly is both under your jurisdiction and HRA's, regardless of whose technical jurisdiction it falls under. I could be wrong, but the impression seems to be that the administration has stopped promoting IDNYC enrollment for all New Yorkers, and instead just focused on using it for newly-arrived asylum seekers. What is the administration doing to promote enrollment for longtime immigrants living in the city?
Again, you know, I'd have to defer to my colleagues at DSS, but what we've done at Moya is ensure that we're reaching out to all our immigrant communities and not just recently-arrived immigrants, which is why we've set up different offices to manage specifically the asylum seeker humanitarian crisis response. But we certainly work with a lot of CBOs that serve longer-term immigrant communities, who we've heard with, who we've heard from, that, you know, we need to do better at reaching out to longer-term immigrant communities. So, we've actively partnered with them to make sure that we're reaching out to them.
It's just, you know, for all of the challenges here, to reduce funding, as HRA has done in the preliminary budget, it really runs in conflict with all of these intentions and the important needs as far as this program goes. If the Chair permits, I just have a couple more questions, if that's okay? One was just to make a point, I think Councilmember Brewer hit it before, too, but really, the chaos of the way in which families are being transferred out of shelters because of the sixty-day notices given to asylum seekers. The fact of the matter is, it's just not assisted. And I just want to echo that point of how deeply shocking that policy is, because it is just a fact that when you're forcing families out of shelter, not only is it so destabilizing, already after the experience of homelessness being destabilizing, too, but when you force families out of shelter, especially when they're recently-arrived asylum seekers, there's no doubt that children, their ability to go to school will be incredibly disrupted. There's just no other way around that, because where they live is now in flux completely, and their ability to get to school is now entirely up in the air, too. So, I just find that a very shocking and inhumane policy, and it needs to stop. And I just wanted to echo Councilmember Brewer on that point as well. I don't know why this administration would issue such a policy in the first place. The adverse impacts are obvious. My last question, sorry, is about the reduction in asylum seeker legal services. The asylum seeker population that continues to arrive in our city has a great need for legal services, and providing these services could enable many asylum seekers to not only exit the shelter system, but find stable housing, which, of course, in one sense reduces the cost to the city, but in another sense, too, will allow them to secure jobs and increase both economically and otherwise their contributions to the city, too. So, all in all, from whatever perspective you want, supporting asylum seekers, providing them legal services actually supports our city. But the preliminary plan did not include any funding in FY25 for asylum and work authorization applications and other legal services, compared to 4.4 million that was included in FY24. As a former legal services lawyer, I know how important legal services are as a front line of defense for so many individuals in need of help. Why was this funding included in FY24 only? And why does the city not allocate a portion of the asylum seeker funding to cover the growing need for legal services?
So, the state has committed some money for legal services, and we're working with them to actualize that and continue expanding our legal services. So, we have, at this point, as I mentioned before, filed more than 37,000 applications to at least get people on the pathway, on their pathway for both work authorization and also potentially citizenship. And so, we're continuing to work with the state on that money, and we're continuing to see where that goes. And will, any updates will be reflected in the executive budget.
The lack of funding is what's most concerning, because it's going to inevitably have an impact on your ability to do that work. My final question is just, how often does your office meet with OWASO, Moya? How often do you all meet to discuss legal services needs for asylum seekers in particular and immigrant services in general?
We meet very often, basically every day. I mean, we have a standing strategic planning meeting Fridays, but we are in constant communication on a variety of different issues, not just legal services.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair. Sorry for going over.
Thank you so much. We're going to take a quick pivot, since we've already started talking, Ms. Schaefer, to OWASO. Can you confirm that this committee has oversight over OWASO?
I don't know. I assume so, but I really don't know. I'm not a lawyer.
Do you commit to testifying at this committee's executive budget hearing?
I would have to talk to CLA and our internal teams. I don't really have a budget, but happy to do whatever is needed.
Where is the office's physical location?
22 Reed Street.
Very happy answer. Can you clarify OWASO's responsibilities and how they differ from Moya?
Absolutely. So, we were set up to specifically focus on this humanitarian crisis. As Commissioner Pastore mentioned, they've traditionally been more focused on immigrants across the spectrum. As you mentioned, 40% of the population, there's a lot of needs. We were set up to specifically coordinate, manage the operations of responding to the rapid influx of people, to make sure we had the right shelter types to advocate for the specific population, to ensure, to build a long-term strategy for the city to absorb people in this way.
And for the record, OWASO's current budget in fiscal, what is OWASO's current budget in fiscal '24, and what is the spending projection for fiscal '25 in the out years?
So, currently, in the preliminary budget, we have a PS budget of 1.7 million and 10 lines.
How many staff do you currently have?
Ten.
That's right, that was in your testimony. And how many people will work for OWASO once the office is fully staffed?
So, we're actually continuing to work with OMB on that, and we'll have an update in the executive budget, but we're expanding.
Will OWASO provide the council with an organizational chart and list of personnel?
Happy to follow up on that.
OWASO reports to the mayor's chief of staff, is that correct?
That is correct.
And how often do you meet with the mayor's chief of staff?
All the time. I think I have, I have at least every other day, if not more.
Shouldn't OWASO report to the deputy mayor of Health and Human Services, similar to Moya?
So, the deputy mayor for Health and Human Services is an active member of the leadership team of this effort. We aligned it to directly report to the chief of staff, so we had one for the backend functions, but she's an active member of the leadership of this effort.
I would imagine much of your operational expertise is coming from the deputy mayor of Health and Human Services. Does the chief of staff, does the mayor's chief of staff have expertise in this kind of operation?
Absolutely. The chief of staff is a crisis management expert who's worked on all, and operations expert who's worked on all levels of government.
And is there a long-term plan for OWASO?
We're constantly working on it to make sure that we are moving as the crisis moves.
Do you anticipate a long-term plan? It sounds like what I'm hearing is you're responding to the crisis, but is there a projected long-term vision for what this office, or will it not be?
Yeah, so, we actually put out a strategic plan last April, which started this office, which was our roadmap. We will likely put out another one, and we are constantly involved in strategic planning and figuring out what the long-term makes sense. But every month of this is different, and so, we have to take in those inputs to make sure we're doing the best for New York City and its citizens.
And are you seeing any duplication of effort?
No.
In terms of, more specifically, in terms of how you work with Moya?
No, because I think that we both have a big piece of this puzzle, but what we're doing is working really closely together and making sure that we're coordinating.
And how often are you coordinating with Moya?
All the time. I'm saying that I meet with the chief of staff every other day. I probably meet with their team every day. Or our team does.
In terms of, the asylum seeker crisis has shown the constant need for the city to step up and deliver for immigrant community. And funding for immigrant services is housed under so many agencies, as we've discussed, which makes it really challenging for council to capture the overall investment in immigrant services. Has there been any communication between OMB and Moya on creating a full agency for immigrant affairs? I guess we're pivoting to you.
No, there hasn't been, not since I joined the administration.
Can I ask why not?
I believe, yeah, no, I don't have a reason for that.
For Ms. Schaefer, do you think there should be the creation of a full agency of immigrant affairs?
What would be their purview that's different than the purview now? I think we're constantly thinking about how to do the long-term asylum seeker operations better and figure out what makes the most sense for the next couple of years, three, five years, and figure out what that actually looks like. So, if the idea is something that would subsume this effort, there's lots of different ideas talked about, there's lots of different models that we're looking at to make sure that whatever the city ultimately does makes the most sense for this crisis.
Got it. I have one clear fact. Forty percent of the New York City population is immigrants. It deserves a full agency that can consolidate services and could make this less of a run across multiple agencies, where you have no jurisdiction, but you have partnership, but they have program. It's a little bit of a nightmare. In terms of, let's pivot to the asylum application help center. The, I guess, we see the administration must really step up resources that can be flexible and long-term to meet the need for legal services, excuse me, to meet the legal services in this current crisis and future crises that are on the horizon. As an example, TPS applications will need renewal every 18 months, which you referred to earlier, and will require additional funding and continued efforts in the future. OWASO has limited coordination with nonprofits, but is asking for a lot of support, like providing volunteers. What is the current budget for the asylum seeker application help center in fiscal '24? And how much is projected to be included in the executive budget?
So, as mentioned before, 11 million was included in the preliminary budget for the asylum application help center and our satellites. The state has committed 40 million. We're working with that to realize that money and working with them on their recommended budget and what comes from that as well.
And how long is the 40 million state funding expected for?
Again, we're seeing what they allocate as part of the state budget process, and then we will figure out what we can do.
And in terms of, are you expecting the 11 million to be included in the executive budget?
I would have to defer to my colleagues at OMB on that one.
How long is the contract at the Red Cross Center?
I'd have to get back to you exactly on that.
And are folks subject to the 30/60 day rule when using the Red Cross Center as their address with USCIS?
So, I have to get back if we started doing that exact, that exact for people who fill up their applications. We have four satellite sites, so it's not just at the Red Cross. Or, sorry, we have four sites, so it's not just at the Red Cross where we do our services. But we have been developing a plan to keep important mail at sites indefinitely.
So, you're keeping mail indefinitely at those sites?
We are almost 100% there throughout our system.
What do you mean, throughout the system?
Throughout the sheltering system.
So, are you saying that every shelter is going to indefinitely keep mail for people who are in them at that site?
Important mail, so specifically important mail.
And how does one determine what's important when you can only see where it's coming from?
So, we have, we've broken down what kinds of things. So, it's social security cards, it's work permits, it's anything from the federal government. So, we have a whole list of things that people, that will be kept indefinitely.
So, when do you expect to roll that out?
So, we've already rolled it out in most of our sites, so we're just working for the next couple of weeks to get it at the rest of our sites.
So, would you say, would you say as of today, all mail will be permanently kept at sites? Shelter sites?
I will not say as of today, in the next couple of weeks.
Next couple of weeks?
Yes.
You expect it to be 100%?
Yes.
And it will be held... And it will be held indefinitely at those sites?
Yes.
And as people are moving because of the 30-60 rule, they're gonna be told they can go back to their former site? Okay. What data, and I think, apologies, I think you mentioned this earlier, but I wanted to make sure we have it. What data is being collected on the asylum application help center?
So it's the applications, um, we're also collecting, uh, like what we, what we accomplish, some general information about the individuals, so that we can, um, get back in touch with them at certain key points to try to invite them to do other things. So for instance, with folks who've applied for asylum, six months later, we can call them, we can get them in if they've gotten their biometrics done to fill out their work authorization.
And, and who has access to this data?
It's very, um, protected information, because obviously it's immigration data. We do not keep completed applications. We were very clear at that in the very beginning, we don't keep include, um, completed applications, but we, um, the data is utilized and seen by a select few people.
Okay, how many attorneys are currently operating on the site?
I'd have to get back to you on the breakdown of attorneys, but we have, um, 125 application assistants and attorneys and interpreters.
So 125 application assistants?
Attorneys and interpreters, and I have to get back to you on the breakdown, at specifically the Red Cross site, I think.
Of, of these attorneys, how many does OASO fund?
So this is funded through, um, a contract through On Call Council. And we also have some pro bono firms.
And are any, are many of these attorneys from, uh, for-profit organizations, uh, are being paid?
So, uh, obviously there's folks doing pro bono, but we are paying, um, some of the immigration attorneys. Some of them might have their own law firms. But we have a panel of people who reviews each application, especially for the immigration attorneys.
Got it. Um, I guess if you could provide the breakdown for us, that would be helpful. What was the result of the recent engagement of universities with NYU, Columbia, Baruch, among others, at the asylum application help center?
Um, and sorry, I just actually got an update. It's 120 application assistants and 25 lawyers is the breakdown, so it's actually a little more than I had in my paperwork.
25 lawyers and 100 assistants.
Yep. Um, so we actually have a couple of, of smaller satellites. I think, um, we have, I have to get back to you on exactly who, but I think there's two smaller satellites at those schools, which is really exciting.
And is there plans to continue the programming? Do you have a sense of, when you say smaller, what does that mean?
Uh, they're just doing less applications than we're doing in our bigger sites.
And what's the volume for those, more or less?
Uh, I'd have to get back to you.
Okay. Are you hoping to continue or expand this type of programming?
Absolutely. And, and we're constantly looking at what's the next phase of this, and what makes sense as we, we take into account the fact that people need long-term representation and working with our colleagues in Moya to figure out what's the right balance of immediate stabilization, if you will, of legal and long-term support.
Got it. And I have to ask this again, because we've received very interesting conflicting information. Does your office meet with Moya to discuss legal services needs for asylum seekers?
Yes, we do.
And does OASO coordinate with nonprofit organizations on recruiting volunteers to assist with the massive need of the applications?
So we've had a couple meetings with non-pro, legal nonprofits who are doing this work to ensure we're hearing from them and hearing their concerns and coordinating.
Wha, what are some of the concerns that you're hearing from the legal nonprofits?
I mean, I think it, it really comes down to this idea of representation versus pro se, um, help. Again, we're, we're really doing this, this short-term stabilization to get everybody's clock started and to really get them on the pathway, especially because we know, um, when we started even, that, um, the capacity of everybody was so limited with so many people coming into the city, that we needed to figure out something high-volume, low-touch that we could do quickly to get people on the right path, and then figure out what we do to adequately source the field, or sorry, adequately resource the field.
Right. Um, in terms of, uh, what, what we've heard from nonprofit legal service providers is that the RFP that the administration is putting out, um, have unrealistic deliverables for the amount of funding available, and many attorneys are not applying for that. What is your response to that? Because I'm sure you have heard it directly as well.
So we don't, it's not RF, RF, RFP that has to do with Moya's RFP.
Yeah, if I can respond, I mean, we can't, we can't speak to, uh, what will be in the RFP, because that process hasn't been completed. But I, I can hand it over to Tom to speak generally about, um, our approach, uh, to this work.
Or, or how, or how have, has Moya responded to this critique of, um, deliverables that do not make sense and, and a lack of funding?
Well, before I hand it over to Tom, you know, there, there's a distinction between the concept paper that was published and the eventual RFP. We wanted to gather comments based on the concept paper. So again, you know, we'll take, we're taking those comments into consideration. It was important for us to, uh, follow the guidelines provided by DSS to receive, uh, feedback from the public, but I'll hand it over to Tom.
Thanks, Commissioner, and thanks, Chair. Just to repeat, uh, we issued the concept paper with the intention of, um, drawing out community, uh, nonprofit, potential vendor feedback. We've received a great deal of that, uh, we're currently developing, uh, the first draft of the RFP. As the Commissioner mentioned, the concept paper isn't necessarily what will be in the RFP, but we can't speak to the process or to what, uh, the eventual deliverables or structure of, uh, that program will be.
I know we're in this weird moment of some things we can't fully discuss, but we, we've been informed that, um, it looks like hourly, uh, rates that are posted for, for-profit providers are significantly higher than what they're offering nonprofit providers. What's up with that?
I would defer to Molly regarding, uh, the help center.
So, um, On Call Council, which is the temp lawyer firm, which we're, which we use to, um, to staff the asylum seeker help clinic, we, at the time, wanted to make sure that we could get as many people onboarded as quickly as possible. We did an effort to save costs and lower some, um, lower some of those salaries a couple months ago, and we're, again, constantly looking at how to do this better and different. Again, we wanted to set, we had, we, we had a mandate, which was our collective mandate, to get as many people this kind of support as quickly as possible. And so we, at the time, um, tried to source it so that we could get as many, um, lawyers as quickly as possible.
And just to build on that, I think what you're seeing is, uh, you know, in, in order to respond in an emergency, when professional capacity in a field is limited, oftentimes it will require, uh, higher pay or a premium of sorts. Moya, Moya's purview is building the capacity of the field over time and ensuring that small community-based organizations are appropriately resourced, and those community-based organizations that don't necessarily have or offer legal services are able to build them over time. So it's building the professional capacity of the field, um, longer term.
Yeah, but I, I gotta say, I, that, that's completely disregarding, uh, a good number of institutions with very deep expertise in this city of providing legal services over a very long period of time. And some would argue, a more effective legal representation, uh, for these cases, certainly culturally competent. So having, I understand the need to scale up very quickly, but this consistent message that this administration sends that it would pay double to corporations and corporate entities and private entities and continue to devalue its nonprofit counterparts who are here, good, bad, and ugly, is the message that we seem to be receiving with these consistent disparities and how contracts are awarded and the values. We're seeing this over and over again, obviously not, not simply at Moya, but in this entire space, we are seeing a prioritization of corporations and profit for corporations and not our nonprofit competent partners who have been here. And I agree that there is work to be done in terms of building capacity of smaller providers, but we have an incredible network here with very rich and deep expertise, who's being nickled and dimed while we're paying private attorneys much more money.
Can I just, actually just one point on that? This is a, it's a temp firm that hires the lawyers on our behalf, so a lot of the folks that we have in our sites are nonprofit lawyers, they work for nonprofits, and they work for us. It's, it's a lot of, it's about the individual, it's not necessarily about the company. I hear your point, though, which is a point well-taken, and is something that we are, as we look to a long-term strategy for this, we are actively looking on how to make the field more able to respond in this way.
So in terms of, is there any plan to increase the legal services in fiscal 25 to meet the 150 million fiscal 25 funding request from legal professionals?
I mean, we're currently expanding our work through the state, um, and I defer to Moya on the other.
Yeah, there's current, uh, it's not something that's in, in our, the preliminary budget. Again, we're at the beginning stages of this process. We'll certainly, you know, uh, continue to work with City Hall and OMB on this. But I did wanna have, give Tom an opportunity to talk about ASLAN, which I spoke about earlier, and also mention that, that speaks to, uh, the, one of your earlier questions. We've, in the last, um, couple of months, I think we've had many good discussions around our desire, uh, to move away from these sort of for-profit contractors to working closer with our nonprofit vendors. Again, um, you know, there, the short-term strategy required us to work in such a way that we had to rely on this temp agency. But ASLAN, I think, is a good, uh, model that we can, uh, look to, to working and expanding capacity of our nonprofit providers in partnership with, uh, the City University of New York. So Tom, if you wanna speak to it.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, uh, as Commissioner said, that's been the attention of Moya and the Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network, uh, since inception. In the past year, the collection of organizations that, uh, make up that, uh, initiative have held 43 clinics serving 756 newly arrived migrants and asylum seekers who arrived on or after January 1st, 2022. There is no requirement that they actively live in shelter, so it's a broader population. And the services they provide are also broader. They serve individuals with pro se asylum application assistance, TPS application assistance, work authorization application assistance. They also provide guidance, uh, with respect to representing oneself in court, given that representation is very low, uh, fieldwide. They help folks with changes of venue and chan, and, um, changes of address, all the things necessary to ensure, uh, success, uh, in the case to the extent possible. They also provide training sessions, more than 8,000 people have, uh, received training and informational sessions from ASLAN partners. This is further building the capacity of the field. Many of the individuals participating in those sessions were asylum seekers themselves, learning how to navigate their own case. Many thousands of others were frontline, um, workers, uh, community-based organization staff, volunteers who are working to assist asylum seekers, even shelter staff, so that they are more aware of, uh, the sort of paperwork people are presenting with, and not providing legal advice, but helping to orient people to the appropriate resources and information. So it's a holistic approach, uh, community-rooted, driven by nonprofits, and, uh, we're proud of everything that our partners under that initiative have accomplished to date.
And, and remind me again, what's the, um, what's the line item for this program? What's the budget for ASLAN?
Um, I would have to defer to OMB as to how it's listed. But for this initiative, uh, we were, uh, allotted $5 million, um, spread throughout FY23 and FY24.
And is it, are you expecting to continue the same funding level in this coming year?
Uh, we'll continue to have, uh, conversations with OMB on this. As the Commissioner mentioned, uh, we're in that process.
I forgot, we can't answer budget questions. In terms of, uh, in, uh, Ms. Schaefer, you mentioned definitely drawing down, uh, money, the 40 million from the state. Wha, what's the advocacy or funding requests, uh, from the federal government in terms of, um, legal services in particular?
So, uh, we are constantly working with the federal government and pushing them for more money and pushing them also to help us on the legal side, because we're also doing a lot of advocacy on making the process better. And, I mean, as Commissioner mentioned, TPS for Venezuelans was huge, and their federal clinic onsite with us, being able to give someone their receipt notice onsite was also really big. And so we continue to work with them on that, um, and making the process a little bit more streamlined and easier for the actual applicant on the pro se side has been a really big part of our advocacy while we have their, um, buy-in here.
Have, is there an actual amount that we've been requesting for funding from the federal government, related specifically to legal services?
I'd have to get back to you on any specifics around that.
And it, have there been conversations with OMB on increasing immigration legal services in the executive budget?
We are constantly in communication with OMB, we're constantly in communication with the state on increasing our, um, funding around legal services. Because we're expanding and we continue to expand.
Um, what has collaboration looked like between the help center and the legal service nonprofit providers?
So we've had, um, as I mentioned, we had, we've had a couple of roundtable meetings. We've also had a lot of nonprofit staff who actually are working with us. We also, at Red Cross was, um, also some of the legal providers doing their own clinics, their pro se clinics. So we've had lots of different opportunities to talk and figure out how to do best by our clients, and, you know, they've brought some suggestions on how we can do things better. We've brought some of their suggestions on how to make the process better to the federal government, um, to try to get those process improvements.
You anticipated my next question, if you could, could you color a little bit more around what some of the improvements, uh, recommendations you've received from nonprofits?
Yeah, I think, uh, we all collectively wanna make it, uh, the ability to actually apply online for everybody regardless if they need a fee, a fee waiver or not. That's one of our biggest ones, getting rid of the fees would be probably a really big, um, boon for everybody. Simple things like not requiring a two-hole punch for a pro se application would be a really big deal. And we've really pushed on that one. But there's, it sort of runs the gamut. I'm happy to share our specific asks, because we've, again, uh, talked to the, the legal providers, and we've done, just based on our own, uh, I would like to call it expertise at this point, on pro se applications, we've been able to kind of create a list that we constantly, uh, work with the federal government on.
Um, what, what resources does OASO make available for providers engaged in this work?
So we don't have any contracts, and we don't have, um, an OTPS budget, and therefore we make no resources available, but what we do is, um, coordinate on what agencies could potentially make available, and, and the philanthropy community.
Got it. And in terms of, can providers utilize the space at the help center?
So we actually, in our federal clinic, which is the only So we actually, in our federal clinic, which is the only of our sites that actually has space right now, it's at John Jay, we, we had two different providers come in and be able to apply their clients in the federal government process too. So we've made that space available to them to be able to utilize the federal government being there to get faster receipt notices.
But at the other centers, they cannot?
At the other centers, they can't because we just don't have any space at the other centers.
Got it.
Just want to mention that through ASLAN, which Tom just described, we just opened a space, a physical space where nonprofit providers with ASLAN are working from.
And where is that space?
413 East 120th and East Harlem. Appointments can be made through the asylum seeker resource navigation sites as well as the Action NYC hotline or the Moya Legal Support Hotline.
Great, thank you.
Just, just want to clarify one point because sometimes language makes it a little weird, right, to, to understand. So our navigation sites were established in partnership with Catholic charities and nonprofit organizations. Initially, we called them satellite sites to our navigation site. There's some confusion there. There's also satellite sites to the application Help Center. But these, what we used to call satellite sites, now they're called navigation sites, are nonprofit organizations spread throughout New York City that connect to our, to ASLAN and other services that we coordinate. And so there's some overlap here with asylum seeker support. The only difference is that we support asylum seekers who are not just in, under our care, but already living in our communities.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for the clarity and the decoder ring on all the services. I'll continue to need more guidance. In terms of, I, one of the, one of the critiques I've heard of actually staff at the Help Center has been that over the progression of time, they saw quality being eroded for quantity. And we know asylum applications generally take a long time. The other critique I've heard is that the dependence on language line is deplorable and with such a sensitive topics as the topics that are discussed in that application, that it's just a real serious problem. How do you ensure that quality remains the principal driving motivator as opposed to quantity? And how do you respond to, to that, those critiques?
Thank you for bringing those up. Obviously, if there's any specific concerns about certain applications, we're always happy to take feedback because we know how important these applications are. So we have made it a priority through on-call counsel to get bilingual staff and to get bilingual staff in certain languages that are less common. We do use language line when we don't have someone who speaks that or, we don't have someone who is available at that time, who speaks that language so that we can continue doing the work. But it is something that we've prioritized, is making sure that we can try to get more and more bilingual staff to be able to help and more, because we, we know how important it is to be able to have that conversation with someone who understands your language and especially these conversations. So 100% we are aligned there. You know, some of the languages are harder to get bilingual staff than others, especially it, it also depends on who applies and we, you know, continue to send out that application everywhere. To the second question about quality, quality is underpinning everything that we do. We, you know, after TPS was announced, we transitioned a little bit more of our time and energy to TPS, just so that we can get it done as quickly as possible and then transition back to asylum. But we have a stepwise process where you have the asylum application Help Center, the application assistance, then you have immigration attorneys that look over their work and it's, it's more than one. And then you also have the mailroom person at the end of the day that does another look. So we have multiple checks in place. We have heard back from EOIR, from DOJ about the quality of our applications. But again, if you're hearing anything in, in particular, we're always happy to look into it. You know, I, quality is really the underpinning of what we're doing.
No, thank you for that. I, I, what I was hearing was that the mandate is to complete the application in one sitting, hell of high water. I don't know what the result of that looks like if, if, if you're receiving on the backend any, any kind of guidance, if that's materializing, but a discomfort around ramming through an application in one sitting, which we know in a regular setting would take months, if not weeks, because the matters are so sensitive and traumatizing, quite frankly. So I, I, yeah, it sounds like you definitely have obviously multiple layers there. I don't know what feedback you've been receiving, but having all these applications done, is that a mandate? Are they supposed to be done in one sitting and that's it?
No, it takes however long it takes.
Chair, if I can speak to the language access. I think this is one of the, the ways that we can, we can speak to the responsiveness of our language access team. We also heard feedback around language line and language access needs at the Application Center and at the HRCs. We deployed our staff, once we were able to hire them, deploy them, to help the teams there develop language access plans and address some of the issues that we were seeing as more languages of limited diffusion became present at these locations.
And in terms of, I, you mentioned that, that folks receive six-month callbacks. How successful are those callbacks? Are you able to track in how successful that has been?
So it's been complicated because if you don't do your biometrics appointment, then you, your clock stops. And so we've been seeing that. It's, it's a really complicated process with the federal government and so we're really trying to, again, use every lever we can to get that process to be a little bit better so that we can serve people more efficiently.
So, but in terms of the, and forgive me, I may be not, I may not have as much nuance here, but how are you, how are you keeping track of all the potential places of divergence here? Or rather, what, do you keep track of the metrics? Like, we did 11,000 applications, 30% of them, we have been able to maintain full contact and we would consider that a fully successful. Do you have those kinds of metrics around how you're following these various applications and where the points of diversion or failure are?
So we do have numbers on the amount of people that we've called back and if we've been able to, to get them. I do not have those numbers with me and so I'm happy to follow up on that. But that is something that we are looking at. But again, we're, like, our, our site was only open last summer, so it's, we're in the, the starting phases of that six-month clock anyway.
Sure, thank, thank you. We'd, we'd love to receive as much data around where the, where the various points of failure and challenges are in the system. Because again, we're investing and making sure we're doing right and if there are multiple points of failure we're not able to address, we're simply kind of throwing good money after bad and, and could be, you know, have implications for people's lives. So thank you, we, we'll talk more. So just moving on really quickly. In terms of transportation, it's been really troubling that last year in 2023, the city did not cover any of these costs, forcing grassroots organizations like Team TLC or artists and athletes activists to step up and cover costs out of pocket. Which agency covers costs related to re-ticketing?
So each agency has a re-ticketing, has a re-ticketing option in each of the shelters. We also have re-ticketing at the Arrival Center, so we have it throughout our system.
And can you provide us a status with the update as to the city's current spending for re-ticketing?
So as of 1/31/24, we had purchased 28,568 tickets. The amount spot, the amount spent was 7.6 million around. And that was largely due to the increase in tickets to destinations outside of the US.
So airline companies must be real happy.
What?
Airline companies must be real happy with New York City.
Some of it's bus tickets, some of it's, it's land travel. It's not just airlines.
Fair enough, fair enough. Which providers, have any providers been reimbursed for re-ticketing?
So the, the groups that we have doing the re-ticketing have been reimbursed for it.
So there's no outstanding invoices as far as re-ticketing is concerned, as far as you know?
I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay. All right, knocked my socks off to learn that New York City owes NILAC $6 million and still requires so much service from the entity. So I'm glad to hear there's no outstanding balances here. In terms of, in terms of the Help, let me just take a, we're going to pivot really quickly to the debit cards again. The math isn't quite mathing, so we're doing a pilot for 500 families, $1,000 a month. And how long do we anticipate that pilot going on for?
That pilot will be until, so we, as always mentioned, we don't control what happens at the border. So it's really about new families that come in and get placed in Hannock Hotels. And so that pilot will take us as long as it takes to put people in those rooms.
But for 500 families, $53 million?
It's not for that $53 million.
Oh, no, it's not.
It's not.
What's the correct number?
I don't have the exact amount, we can get back to you on that, but the 500-family pilot is not $53 million.
But the contract, I reviewed the contract.
Yes.
The total contract is $53 million. The amount of money, I think, was $50 million, or $3 million in administrative costs.
The not exceed, so that, that's the, the full value of the contract, right? So it, we can use whatever we need out of it.
So, so we, we anticipate a pilot to run as long as?
It takes to fill the rooms.
To use all $50 million?
No, until we get to 500 households.
That's a, that's a really large up-to amount for 500 households, right? Because that would be $500,000. There's a big difference between reaching $500,000 for a household, excuse me, I'm using the wrong words, and a $50 million gap.
But it allows us the flexibility to expand if we like what we see.
That's a, that's a big gamble.
But we don't, we are not on the perfect $50 million.
I'll tell you a good, I'll tell the admin a good place to put some clear money would be in adult literacy. Okay, that's wild. All right, in terms of, let's see, we have so many questions. Thank you for your patience in being here. In terms of adult literacy, I think Commissioner, you said that Moya was not included in the adult literacy RFP conversations, is that correct?
That's correct.
Ms. Schaefer, was your office consulted in the adult literacy RFP contract? Neither, okay. All right, in terms of, let's see. So many things. I know we have to talk to DYCD around adult literacy because that math doesn't add up either.
I would just add that we, we do meet with Commissioner Howard, his team, to discuss issues relating to immigrants and immigration. Quite often, we just held the immigrant media roundtable with him to promote programs that they manage, but in terms of being part of the RFP process, we, we were not.
I mean, it would be amazing if they consulted the preeminent organization that's dealing with immigrant issues across New York City. So I'm, I'm a little befuddled by that. In terms of Action NYC, why are there no metrics or performance measures? Action NYC?
You mean in the preliminary budget or in that?
Are there any metrics?
There are, there are. And Tom can speak to it, but I believe part of the issue is that it's not included in the PMMR, right? That you have available? Yes, we did, we did see that. And in fact, some of that information there is, is out of date. We're happy to help, to work with you to, to make sure you have all available up-to-date information. Tom can speak about the data that we collect and the metrics that we follow for Action NYC. And in fact, it's quite revealing, just to give you one example, we received over 60,000, as I mentioned in my testimony, over 60,000 calls to our Immigration Legal Services hotline, which is part of our Action NYC program, which is a record. We've never received that many calls. As a result, we added basic consultations to, to this hotline because of lack of referrals to legal providers. But I'll let Tom speak about the data that we collect.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'll speak briefly. The Moya publishes its annual report each year under the charter mandate. Action NYC data is included in that report as well as all other Moya-run initiatives. I have data from calendar year '23. So Action NYC organizations outperformed overall their targets by 22% and their applications filed were, were approved at a rate of 97%. The Action NYC program consists of 18 nonprofit contracted community-based organizations and legal service providers that work in their communities and community-based organizations as well as hospitals, libraries, and schools. And the program has existed under the HRA contracts since 2021.
Right. We want the good story of our performance in the PMMR since there's not a lot of good data in there, or at least underperformance, severe underperformance. In terms of the hotline, thank you so much for that. What is, is there a status update on Moya's hotline? You mentioned 60, 60,000 received calls and in our last hearing, wanted to hear a little bit more about what, the issues that you're seeing coming through the hotline. Can you tell us a little bit about like what, what that looks like?
It, it depends on which hotline we have, we operate two hotlines.
Two hotlines?
Yes.
Okay.
That PMMR needs to be updated for sure. The first, Tom can talk about the Immigration Services hotline, which deals with immigration legal questions. And again, we've had record number of calls, Tom can speak to that. We also have our General Axi Moya hotline, which is meant to complement the work of 311. It doesn't replace it because we do not have the staffing that 311 has. It's not a call center, but it is meant for individuals who are having a hard time getting the information that they're looking for. And we often encourage immigrant New Yorkers to call into 311 and if they are, are not successful in obtaining answers to the questions, they can call us. In the past 18 months, last, past year, many of the calls that we've received have to do with accessing legal services. And so we connect them to our legal services hotline, ASLAN, and other resources. And we receive a lot of calls to do with IDNYC and when that happens, we again connect them to IDNYC and explain the process to obtaining appointments. So again, it, we're not, we're not supposed to replace 311, which is really the main vehicle for people to get their answers, questions answered. We're really there to troubleshoot and navigate whenever they're not successful elsewhere. So Tom can talk about the Leo hotline now.
Got it.
Thanks, Commissioner. Just briefly, the hotline has, it was Thanks, Commissioner, just briefly, the hotline has, it was originally created just to schedule Action NYC appointments during the creation of that program in 2015, 2016, and has since discovered, through the diversity of calls, the variety of caller questions, that doing more is necessary, especially given that the demand for immigration legal services is much greater than the supply overall in New York City and across the nation. And so the hotline, we've added hotline operators. Catholic Charities is the contracted nonprofit that runs the hotline. Hotline operators that are multilingual, especially speaking Haitian Creole, given the increase in Haitian nationals coming to New York. And also investing in technology, Ring Central Systems and other CRMs that help them to manage the calls more effectively. Their target deliverable, you know, they've exceeded the number of calls received year after year. But they're required to answer a minimum of 90% of calls without, you know, allowing for too much of dropage. And they have met or come very close to meeting that goal, even with the significant increase in callers.
Does answering mean, like, literally answering, or is that resolution?
Responded to.
Okay.
Yeah.
And in terms of, um, how many staffing, what's the staffing for the General Ask Moya hotline?
The General Ask Moya hotline, just to be specific about the data, has received close to 6,000, has answered to 6,000 inquiries last calendar year. And generally, two staff rotate the answering, the hotline and a couple of fellows. It fluctuates depending on the fellows that we have available.
Got it. And, and in terms of the, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, I was just gonna say that this is why we say that this is not supposed to replace 311, which does have a call center. So we encourage people, if they can't reach us, they, they should reach out to 311. But we often end up getting some of those more complex calls to our hotline.
Have you looked at the overall universe of related, immigration-related, that includes 311 data and what Moya is able to complement?
No, I mean, it's, that's quite challenging, because, as you mentioned, so many people call into 311 that could be immigrants. It's not, that's not information that's readily available to 311 or asked by 311 operators. But when they refer to us, we're able to collect that information.
And for the, I guess for the legal services hotline with the Catholic Charities, how many, how many people serve that contract?
Currently, there are nine operators, one coordinator, and a director.
Got it, thank you. I know the answer to this question, have you requested additional funding for Moya's hotline?
We have not, we'll engage in the process as we continue.
We're talking with OMB. What is the fiscal '24 adopted budget and fiscal '25 preliminary budget for We Speak NYC?
I'll let Jas speak to the, to the budget. In a second.
Thank you so much. For FY '24, we have been budgeted at $873,000. And then for FY '25, we are budgeted at $617,665. And this is due to, you know, to the peg, so we were pegged under that, under that program for FY '25.
I'm so sorry, can you repeat the second half of that?
Sure. So for FY '25?
Yes.
We are budgeted for $617,000, 665. And, you know, because we were pegged for, you know, for that program, so we, we had, we, we had a cut.
So that was a, a cut due to the peg?
Mm-hmm.
And in terms of the, the, what's the status of the We Speak program? Is it available in the HIRX?
So, historically, the program has been volunteer-led, meaning like, you know, that any institution and nonprofit that was interested in providing classes, you know, would have access to our We Speak material for free, right? We would provide technical assistance, and essentially, we would train them, and then we'd do it on our own. This fiscal year, you know, we have been shifting the way that we actually manage this program and, you know, and, and make it accessible to, you know, to communities. You know, folks can still ask for this service, right? CBOs can still provide the service completely voluntary. But recently, on February 1st, we launched the pilot program for English, Moya English Learning and Support Centers at CBOs. Currently, the pilot is housed at 10 CBOs, so they're getting funding to be able to provide these classes. Also, uh, on March 1st, on March 1st, we officially started the pilot with all three library systems to actually provide these classes using our, our We Speak curriculum as well. And we anticipate that for this pilot, also with the libraries, we are gonna have at least, you know, 60 libraries all across the five boroughs providing these classes. And on top of that, what I want to also share, that we're very excited, that we have been also working on, and I think briefly the Commissioner mentioned this, we, the We Speak material initially was always intermediate level. So in the past year and change, our team has been working to develop the beginner, the beginner-level material, which is what we have been using to roll out as part of these pilots. And, you know, again, to, to be able to support, support not only the asylum seeker population that has recently arrived, but also longer-term immigrants that, you know, that can utilize that level. So we are growing and, and shifting the way in which we, that we manage this program.
So, thank you, it's exciting, anything would be expanding in this context. And so for the 60 libraries, it, this is a curriculum that is handed to the libraries, and they figure out how to implement and program within their library, is that correct? I'm sorry if I...
Yeah, correct, I mean, our, our curriculum, right, is very flexible. This, this is a very practical English learning class, right? We want to make sure that folks that do attend these classes, that they're able to utilize it right away, right? By learning about not only city services and, you know, throughout, you know, throughout the city, but also to empower them, right? And, you know, as well. So we provide videos, technical assistance, which is training to facilitators, right? And we work also directly, whether it be with libraries or CBOs, right? To see how we can actually incorporate this model that we have to perhaps the, you know, already existing program that, you know, that they, they have been doing, right? Or do this for the first time.
And if I can just add, again, this is very, very exciting program for us to, to develop. We've pivoted, as Jas described. And it really, and to clarify, we are funding these CBOs and the libraries to engage in this work. And we are providing the technical assistance they need to establish these, these courses at their sites. This is with the idea that these are trusted sites where newly arrived immigrants or long-term immigrants can connect to and build community, which is ultimately sort of what our goal is there, in addition to, of course, learning English. And just to answer your question, we are not at the HIRX, that is the DYCD program that's at the HIRX. Our hope, though, is to connect newly arrived immigrants, asylum seekers, to the classes at these CBOs and at the libraries.
Can you provide a list of the 10 CBO partners? And how much, how much do you offer to each library?
Yes.
To implement the program?
Jas can provide you with a breakdown.
Sure, again, these are pilot programs, so, you know, these had also been starting way into the fiscal year. So we have 10 CBOs, we have DSI International, Korean Community Services, La Colmena, LOL, Life of Hope, Mexican Coalition, Mixteca, Muslim Community Network, Project New Yorker, and United Sikhs. And these are the 10 CBOs that, with the pilots that started February 1st. With the libraries, we're working across all three library systems. NYPL with about $260,000, with Queens Library with about $246,000, and Brooklyn Library with about $260,000, you know, to be able to do this pilot.
So 360 was for the New York Public Library?
260.
260, so, so between 240 and 260 for each of the library systems to implement the program over a year's time?
Well, from now until the end of the fiscal year, and we hope to continue this pilot for FY '25. And, you know, we'll, we'll continue those conversations with our partners at OMB.
Got it. Thank you for that. In terms of language access, what's the budget for language services in fiscal '24 and '25?
I'll let Jas, yeah, also talk about the breakdown of that budget. But like I said, as Jas looks for the tab, like I said, it's a, it's an area we've expanded from three staff to roughly 20 staff at this point.
For FY '24, for language services and language access specifically, we are budgeted at $669,000 roughly. And then for FY '25, as of right now, we're budgeted for $534,000 roughly. And again, for FY '25, you know, the funding will, will, will probably be updated as we move towards the executive budget.
Right. And in, in fiscal, do you know what the numbers are for fiscal '23?
Give me one sec. So for FY '23, and we have $1,343,000. I just want to sort of clarify that amount, because the bulk of that amount, which is, you know, a little over a million, actually was moved over to our PS in FY '24 to be able to hire, you know, all of those lines. So I just want to see, you know, I just want to make that note.
Right, so you're not gonna give me a heart attack when I say 1.3 million?
Exactly, I just want to...
$500,000. Still, nevertheless, $534,000, given the shortage, right? And the absolute need of interpreters, I mean, across the city, 100% is, is not the direction we want the investment to be going in. So is the, the language specialist that Moya has hired, are you fully staffed at this point?
Close to, we're still hiring for two positions, and, that's true. And only because the, the roles need to pass a test that, in order to qualify for the, for the job. We're hiring linguists that are community-rooted, but nonetheless, they have to pass this test in order to serve as a language access specialist.
So that would be, so you have 18 on board, and you have two to be in the process?
We're still in the process of hiring an Urdu language access specialist and a Haitian Creole language access specialist. And again, all agencies have dedicated language access budgets and, and staff. And this staff in particular is, is to serve for technical assistance and support, and to provide interpretation and translation for mayoral offices.
Got it, and what, which languages are mostly in need of translation and interpretation that you're seeing right now?
Well, in general, what we have, top 10 languages, in general, obviously, Chinese and Spanish are the two languages that are most in, in need for these services. But we often say over 200 languages are spoken in New York City. Most recently, an academic put that number at 800. So again, it varies, but the, the top two languages are Chinese and Spanish.
Got it, and in terms of, in terms of where the most significant gaps, obviously with 800 languages or even 200, that's enormous. But we are seeing in communities, particularly African migrants speaking all, all kinds of languages. Are you, are you seeing any particular gaps that have been really challenging to fill? Or respond to, rather?
Yes, certainly, in fact, first day at the job, I, I responded to the Bronx Fire, you know, where a large community of Wolof speaker residents lived. And throughout the asylum seeker humanitarian crisis, we've seen languages of limited diffusion, such as Wolof present at our, in our system. We hired, as part of our language access team, we did hire someone to look specifically at issues to do with languages of limited diffusion, to think through policy and, and technical support assistance that other agencies might need. And of course, you know, we're now mandated to report on Local Law 6. So we've recently completed a survey of 68 CBOs across New York City to assess their translation and interpretation services.
And are there, what are some concrete examples of existing city language learning and access policies or programs for new immigrants that could be improved, from your estimation?
Well, we just spoke about, again, when we're managing crises, often, you know, the, the, you know, first, first work to be done is to respond to the crises. We then step in, such is the case with the Application Help Center and with the Humanitarian Emergency Response Centers, to make sure that language access policies are followed through. And our team is working actively with, with that staff to make sure the language access is, is provided. And it's been a work in progress, but we've made quite a lot of progress. We've deployed our staff to both spaces, we've provided recommendations, and we're working through the challenges there. You know, we, we work very closely with all agencies that interact with immigrant communities. We work closely with the NYPD, for instance, and, and others, to think about ways that they can improve their language access in immigrant communities.
Who, who holds the master contract for language line? What agency?
So, DCAST does, and they also oversee our procurement for language services contracts for Moya.
And is there, to your knowledge, are there other contracts that serve a similar function that are used by the city?
I would have to defer to, to them and probably MOX in terms of the specific, but my understanding is that there, there will no longer be a master contract? Or there was, there's gonna be an RFP, I believe, that is gonna...
Yeah, and I totally made that up, I don't know if there was a master contract.
Well, there was in the past.
It is, it is the, the tool that agencies say they use and that we hear most about, so I just assumed that was...
Yeah, I mean, there was some... Yeah, I mean, there was a master contract, but it has been, it has expired, and I know the teams, both at DCAST and MOX are sort of working on that to be able to provide the services.
Has, has Moya provided any recommendations around alternative tools to support language access needs in the city?
I mean, not necessarily specifically on that, but I know that our language access team has been, and has been and continues to be in close communication with MOX on language services procurements, and you know, sort of planning for that, and they, they have advice on that, on those pieces.
Yeah, and in a recent hearing with health and hospitals, we heard really dire need for language access in the hospitals as well, so it's, it's such a profound need in the city that really requires some, like, real investment in how to make sure that, you know, we can, we can address our multilingual community. In terms of, in terms of this, just switching to the mayor's American dream, the city rolled out this new initiative called the American Dream Works through the Department of Small Business Services, designed to connect workers with businesses who need them, asylum seekers with work authorization are directed, as was mentioned earlier, to Workforce One Centers and businesses through SBS. Can, can Owasso describe, like, how this initiative will be implemented, and what's the budget for it?
So I don't have the budget, so I have to get back to you, but the point of that portal was that interested businesses could put their businesses online, and we could connect people through the Workforce One Centers to those eligible businesses, and so, as mentioned, we've given, we've worked with our Department of Labor colleagues, and the State Department of Labor colleagues, and our SBS colleagues, to give lists of people who have either applied, or either applied for work, or, or either have work authorization or have applied to work, to then be able to be reached out for an appointment with either a DOL center or an SBS Workforce One Center, and then be able to connect them to jobs. We also recently had a meeting with federal DOL, state DOL, Commissioner Castro and myself, and the unions, and a lot of other, and some nonprofits, to deepen that partnership and see what federal pressure and convening can do to make sure that we have more jobs available, so we're working on all, sort of all levels to be able to do that.
Do you know how many small businesses are involved in the initiative currently?
I don't, I'd have to get back to you on specifics.
And are there any nonprofits involved in, in these conversations?
Yeah, so I think, yes, there's absolutely nonprofits involved, I think, and especially at the most recent convening, we had a fair amount of nonprofits who are seeing people come in and really know their needs and trying to get them connected, I mean, I think there's, there's two parts of this, as Commissioner Castro always says, there's the informal economy, making sure that people who are working, and we know a majority of people are, are connected to Know Your Rights trainings, and know their rights, and won't get exploited, and then there's also, how do we get people the right types of training to then connect them to the appropriate life-affirming jobs?
And is the initiative anticipated to roll into the out years?
At this point, yes, but I don't know any specifics on dollar figures.
And are there any milestones in terms of the numbers of individuals to be served?
We are connecting everyone as they become known to us, as someone who has either applied for work authorization or has work authorization to SBS, or to the State Department of Labor, we wanna get people connected to work as quickly as possible.
Okay, and in terms of the rising inflation rates, does the administration intend to increase funding for workforce development CBOs?
I would have to defer to my partners at OMB.
Okay, yeah, and I guess, you know, under, under the guise of the mayor's American dream, I'm curious how the administration is gonna address the growing xenophobia against migrants and asylum seekers. Do you know if there's any budget for that, or any?
So the safety, security, and the uplifting of everyone in our care is top priority for us, curious to work with you to understand exactly what kind of programming you're thinking there, I think we, we.
Yeah, it's, it's not a program, it's actually not saying things like, there's false, patently false statements in the news that there's a migrant crime wave, or patently false statements that migrants will destroy New York City, that's, that's what we need to make sure it doesn't happen. So i- it's a narrative of, of real leadership, not scapegoating folks when it's politically convenient, so, we're good. In terms of, so on the workforce front, we've heard Governor Hochul's executive budget includes the creation of this migrant job, job bank with over eighteen thousand open position from nearly four hundred companies, seventy-five percent of these open positions would be in New York City, pardon me, seventy-five of the open positions will be in New York City, and twenty-four percent would be in the food and hospitality industry. These jobs, however, only apply to those with work authorization. Have you, are you aware of this migrant job bank? And this program, and what has been your interaction?
Yeah, so that's what I was talking about in terms of the State Department of Labor, we're working really hand in hand with them to ensure that as we get folks along the pathway to work, as we're identifying who's either work-eligible or almost work-eligible, we're directing them to the State Department of Labor or SBS, depending on, we have a sharing agreement, to then get connected to the job resources that the state and the city both collectively have, so we can get people connected to work.
So i- is there an outreach campaign that will be associated with the job bank and this work?
So, I can't speak for the state, they do have a website for the job fair program, or sorry, the job program, and they've been doing a fair amount of work on that.
And do you know if any outreach is gonna be done in additional languages? Have you seen any additional language outreach?
I mean, they've been working with our, with our individuals who, as you know, come from a span of different countries and have a span of different language needs, and so they've been working with folks in all different types of languages, just as our SBS folks have too.
Got it, and, and how will migrants be informed about their rights? If so, is this work incorporated, and how will the information be disseminated?
So, I'm gonna defer to my colleague over here.
Yes, thank you, Molly, we'll certainly promote all of these programs through our nonprofit providers, some of our providers who are serving as navigation sites do provide as part of their contracted work, workforce development services, which includes working closely with folks in the informal sector, this is actually one of the work streams that Owasso, Moya, and, and others are, are working on closely together, recent, recent weeks, we've began conversations about how to support those folks who are entering the informal economy, and not just wait until folks get work, work authorization, but obviously, you know, the, the path to work authorization is, is still very fuzzy, right? For some, it takes a very long time, and so, we are really, this is part of our advocacy to get the federal government to redesignate TPS, so that the pathway to work authorization is shortened. And so, yes, we, you know, we're working with some of the immigrant worker centers currently, and some of them are, are nonprofit providers, but we want to continue to expand that work, because it's, it's a very important work stream for a new strategic approach.
And are these gonna, are these all computer-based, is there any system in place to support those that might not be so tech savvy, but are qualified to apply for some of these jobs, like, where will people do that?
So that's why we're connecting them to either the Department of Labor's centers or to the SBS Workforce One Centers, because that is a in, in-person process where they can give them the supports they need, including like resume building, et cetera, and then connect them to jobs that are coming, that are available, and sort of assess every individual's need that way.
So excuse me if I've missed this, but for, let's say, for the Workforce One Centers, are they receiving a contract for this specific work, additional contract, or is this additional work that they're supposed to do within their current contracts?
So Workforce One Centers get a lot of federal dollars, so that's also supporting this, I'd have to defer to them and, and exactly how they're funding this, but this is something that they've taken on over the last couple of months.
Thank you, thank you. We've gone through a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, we kinda got through some of these, in terms of, how many changes of address applications has the city helped to file since 2022, and I know we're gonna solve this problem, are individuals that need to file change of address prioritized at the help center in particular?
So, at the help center, we allow any, we help people with a change of address form, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but happy to follow up.
Great, thank you.
We also help with change of venue forms, for the record.
Change of venue forms, what does that mean?
If they want to go somewhere else, completely leave the city, yes, change of.
Reticketing, is that, is that reticketing?
Yes, we do help with.
We need a whole glossary of terms. In particular, who has access to the help center?
The staff that works there, and the individuals who are, have, who has appointments, who have appointments.
So it's appointment-based?
It's appointment-based.
Okay, and does anyone who needs help with TPS, let's say, whether you've been here five minutes or twenty years, be able to access the help center?
So as we mentioned before, we really focused our asylum application help center and all of our satellites on folks currently in our care, Moya's, Moya's providers, and Moya's role is everybody else.
Got it, and so, when you say currently in our care, if, if they are cycling through the system, they've been displaced and are now waiting, will they be eligible to get access?
So, anyone who's currently in our care, in any form of that, is eligible to get access to our asylum application help center, depending on how many appointments we have on that particular day?
Okay, so as long as they're in the system, some touch point, they could not be necessarily a shelter resident at that point in time, could access the, the help center?
And one, and so, for example, the folks who, you know, we know sixty percent of folks have left our, our care at this point, for the folks who had an asylum application filed with us, and it's six months later, and it's time for work permits, we will take those individuals as well.
Okay, so it's as available?
Yeah, as available.
How many interpreters and translators are available at the help center?
Have to get back to you on the, on the specifics of that.
And is the budget included in help center? In the help center or legal services budget, I think I conflated this here. I'm sorry, the budget for interpreters at the help center?
I'd have to get back to you on the specifics.
Okay, alright.
And sorry, just one, I have an update, total motion to change addresses is five eighty-three.
Great, I love these little nifty phones that give us the answers.
It's great.
I like answers, let's see, I just want, give me one second, I just wanna make sure we, we're getting all the, anything else left there? Ah, okay, great, alright, just wanna make sure, just wanna make sure that we, we have the numbers clearly stated in, in the record, in terms of, so, Moya, for your budget, you're, you're slated seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for six staff plus OTPS, is that correct?
It's seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
Got it.
For six lines under the mayor's office.
Got it, and for Owasso, it's one point seven million for ten positions, not including OTPS?
Correct.
Got it, alright. In terms of Owasso, where do you refer individuals who require long-term legal representation as opposed to the pro se services?
So, we work with Moya to make the appropriate referrals.
And where is Moya finding their referrals?
Well, I'll let Tom speak to some of this, but again, you know, the, the challenge to finding full legal representation to whoever, whoever, with, to everyone who needs it has been existing for a very long time, which is why advocates have been calling for universal legal representation, but I'll hand it over to Tom.
That's right, for certain case types, there are direct referrals to certain contracted legal service providers, these can include a motion to reopen that is on a critical time period, otherwise, many help center participants are referred to the general points of entry for immigration legal services that the city has with its tens of millions of dollars in immigration legal service contracts, and that shows up in Action NYC's data, we've seen a dramatic increase in TPS applications that are complex, oftentimes that means that the individual may have, in their case, a firm resettlement issue that needs to be dealt with, and things like that, so, the, the broad spectrum of available immigration legal services is also serving newly arrived asylum seekers, but there is no very direct referral pathway, it's more general, and also specific to the need of the individual.
How much would you, would you estimate, how much of the need would you estimate we're able to meet within the current confines of, of the services that we provide?
I'll have to get back to you with that estimate.
I know, shooting by the hip, I get it.
I mean, I mean, like I said earlier, there are approximately one point one, one point three million non-citizens in New York City, all of whom would need some form of legal support, whether it's applying for naturalization, applying, reapplying for legal permit residency, or, or other type of immigration legal support.
So it sounds like maybe one percent?
That's what we're probably scratching.
Well, so, and Moya manages one program of many, I mean, many that exist in, in city government, we invest, as city government in total, over seventy million, something like that?
In, in terms of the, the help center, I just wanna make sure, I'm gonna run through some quick questions, process, for, so, I think, we just talked about this, so, folks who are within care are eligible for the help, for appointments at the help center, what information does an individual have to give when they make an appointment?
Let me get back to you on exactly what the screening questions are, but then we also have a orientation with them to make sure that it makes, whatever we're, we're gonna do makes the most sense for them, but let me get back to you on the exact question.
Okay, and are certain folks or appointment types prioritized in that system?
Yes, because we have very, we have a, we're resource constrained like everybody else, and so, we make priorities based on what type of application, so we've made, like I said before, when, when TPS was announced, we put more TPS applicants, appointments online, and took a little bit less asylum applications to make sure that we could get through TPS as quickly as possible.
Got it, so what's the current, where are we in prioritization at this point?
So currently, we're, we're back towards asylum.
Got it.
We've, we've, we've ramped up asylum, we still have opportunities for TPS and work, and we take them on a rolling basis as people become identified to us as TPS or work-eligible, but it's, it's more on the asylum side. And I just wanna answer one question you asked before, how many interpreters is there? And I just want to answer one question you asked before, how many interpreters is 35 to 45 on any given day?
And in turn, so, migrant youth who are in, in shelter can access the Asylum Help Center?
Yes. Yes. Though we are developing and looking into SIDS cases and what we can do on a more pro-state model version of that at this time.
But for SIDS cases in particular, they're, they're able to access the Help Center? Or we're developing, making sure we can address that?
We're developing something there because right now that requires representation.
Got it, thank you. In terms of, are there special providers at the Center who can help anyone with youth, youth cases, specifically those who are eligible for other forms of relief, like the SIDS?
Yeah, we, so, we did a pilot of two SIDS cases, but I think really with SIDS, I'm going to, again, defer to my Moya colleagues.
Tom can speak about SIDS in particular, but we're certainly looking at all different options, pro-state, full legal rep, and so on. We understand that these are very complex cases, they require a special type of care, and so, we've been speaking to many different experts who work on these issues, and we hope to, to have something in place. Tom, if you want to talk a little bit about our work there?
Special immigrant juvenile status can be a life-changing form of relief and, and protection for immigrant youth, and as Commissioner Castro mentioned, we're actively thinking about and exploring ways to increase access to that benefit. There are many barriers along the way, not only within the federal government and access to legal support, but also in the family courts, and so, we're working to identify ways to maximize the existing capacity and also address the need more broadly.
And are you working with specific providers at this point on these cases?
Under Moya's purview, the Action NYC in schools team is, is the team under that program that handles the highest number of SIDS cases. Action NYC in hospitals team also handles some. The majority of youth-focused immigration legal services is housed under HRA and the Office of Civil Justice.
Got it, thank you. And are asylum seekers receiving full legal intake at the Help Centers to see if they're going to be eligible for other immigration benefits, like U-visas? Do they get a full?
So, we really focus on asylum, TPS, or work authorization at this time, but I, if they have other types of needs, then we refer them out to other folks.
So, they are, they are screened, but maybe not supported? Well, they can't be serviced at the Help Center for those other venues? Yeah? You look like you're going to say something.
No, I was just going to say, expand further, as Tom mentioned, the contract that falls under the, the purview of DSS, often known as IOI, takes on many of these complex types of cases.
And does, does Moya and Owasso anticipate challenges, having often traumatized young people who are alone, to figure out how to navigate the family court system or immigration court?
Our Mayor's Office of Community Mental Health recently put out a, a resource guide for providers and those who wish to support this community undergoing such, this, for traumatic experiences. I know that we do have personnel, both at the application center, at the HIRX, and everywhere where asylum seekers are staying, available for, for them to connect with.
And we had therapy dogs a couple of times, which was very nice as well, but we actually have staff onsite at our application center to deal with them.
And Moya also has contracts with nonprofits that provide trainings to our immigration legal navigators and their Action NYC and other programs. These include vicarious trauma and trauma-informed care.
And hopefully, taking care of all those staff members that are holding everyone's trauma as well. Thank you. Who makes the determination if an individual is eligible for TPS?
So, we have screening questions in shelter. If somebody come, we, if somebody, for this effort, we identified those who had self-reported as Venezuelan, who had come in before a specific time, we reached out to them, we had a series of screening questions to figure out if, if they really were, what we would consider eligible for TPS, and then we help schedule them for an appointment at our satellite clinics or the asylum application Help Center.
Got it. And when they come in, do they have to request, like, the application type, or how is that? Is that?
No, there was a, this was a direct funnel. It was an, it was a sort of cohesive effort between our shelter staff and the, the folks, and then the actual application. And then we also had the federal government onsite to help give receipt notices right there and there, and then and there, and, and help us through the process.
Got it. And are any of the legal service providers required to provide any of the information they gather from individuals to Owasso or Moya, or any other city agency?
In terms of, it's, so, what kind of information? Just trying to understand.
I guess, what kind of information would the legal service providers have to report to any city agency?
So, I don't know the metrics that they use in Moya. I think we have some clear, I mean, we directly manage our asylum application Help Center and our, our satellites, so we have sort of metrics there, but other than that, no.
We're, we're wrapping up, and I know you, you have to all go. How are people in upstate locations accessing legal services?
So, the state, through their 20 million funding of, I think it was, they, they funded 20 million for legal and case management support specifically for our upstate hotels.
So, are you involved in that coordination, or?
I mean, yes, our staff has to be because those folks are coming into our shelters, so our staff is, is coordinated with them to make sure that they have appropriate access.
So excited. Made it through so much, so much to go. No, kidding. All right, I think, I think we're on, we're solid, right?
Right.
Um--
We're good for South Side.
Good for South Side, okay, great. Let me just make sure. Last question, this is going to be really tough. What is the, what is the city doing to protect new arrivals against legal service fraud?
This is actually one, one of the most important questions, in fact, most recently raised by the Ecuadorian community, who's seen a large amount of misinformation in their communities as talk about potential TPS starts to ramp up. We partner with DCWP, Department of Consumer Work Protections, who manages, oversees the program that, the fights against immigration legal services fraud. We, however, do utilize our outreach staff to make sure that our communities are educated, and this is, for this reason, we set up this hotline so that folks can have, if they cannot access other information through 301, information through our hotline. And I, I think this is, this is going to be one of the biggest efforts we undertake because, again, there are many bad actors trying to take advantage of these vulnerable communities.
It's been a longstanding problem in our communities, so many bad actors. Thank you. I think, I think with that, I would like to thank the administration, thank you all for bearing with us through these questions, and obviously, thank all the staff for their work on the ground, and I know these conversations are tough, but we have to hold a standard of excellence. And, and, you know, what we see often is what is playing on the ground doesn't necessarily reflect what is, what we're talking about and how we're characterizing the situation, so it's important to bring transparency and accountability and hold each other to the highest standard of possible to make sure that we have dignity for all New Yorkers, whether you're here five minutes or, I said 30 decades in another hearing, which was absurd. I don't know anyone that old, or, or a long time, so I just, I want to thank you for that. We'll continue, obviously, there's a lot to follow up on, many questions I would not answered here, we will be following up to get those responses. I would have loved to see Moya say we need $150 million for legal service provider provision, including the request for additional money for adult literacy and baselining of those monies, but alas, you're negotiating with OMB, so we'll continue to have these conversations. So, thank you for your time.
Chair Aviles, thank you so much for your questions. My staff is, will be working closely with your staff to answer those questions. Also, thank you to the committee staff. I, I did want to, well, again, shout out Moya staff, Owasso staff, all the city employees and our partners working in this response. Also want to shout out everyone that will be testifying today. Not long ago, I was here testifying as an advocate, certainly pushing for resources. I know that my staff will be watching, paying close attention, taking notes about everything that people will be sharing today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And with that, we'll turn to public testimony.
Thank you, Chair Aviles, and thank you to the administration. We will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. Please note that if your prepared testimony exceeds three minutes, in addition to testifying before the committees today, you may also submit your full testimony to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. If you are here to testify in person and you have not yet completed a witness slip, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now, even if you registered to testify online. That way, we'll know that you've made it in person and I know to call on you. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. And with that, I will call our first panel momentarily. All right, first up, we'll hear from Monique Francis, Meetu Dar, Liza Schwartzwald, Margaret Martin, Kelly Agnew Barahas, and Harold Solis. All right, and we'll start from my right, your left, so whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson Aviles, and members of the Immigration Committee for inviting us to submit our testimony today on behalf of CUNY Citizenship Now. My name is Monique Francis, and I'm currently serving as the interim executive director of CUNY Citizenship Now. With me today is our managing attorney for community events, Meetu Dar, and she also manages our city council program. We are here today to speak on how the funding from the city council for our program has continued to transform the lives of your constituents. Our priority and commitment to you remains in assisting every New Yorker on the path towards legalizing their status with the ability to have work authorization and eventually becoming US citizens. Our program was created with the vision of returning power to immigrant New Yorkers. Utilizing a model of pro-state legal services, we empower immigrants with the knowledge which allows them to advocate on their own immigration case. 27 years later, our pro-state service is a widely recognized model for legal service providers around the nation and is now being adopted as the model and solution to respond to the migrant crisis, crisis the city is facing. Given our expertise in processing large numbers of applications in a group processing event, our goal is to create a similar program for asylum seekers with your support. Many of you have hosted and sponsored our large-scale citizenship application assistance events, where we serve, on average, 100 green card holders on a single Saturday. These monthly events, which are held in the city council districts, broaden our outreach to the city's diverse immigrant communities. At these events, our attorneys, paralegals, and trained volunteers offer one-on-one consultation to assess participants' eligibility for immigration benefits and assist them in applying for these benefits when qualified. Since the inception of our city council program in 2010, more than 68,000 New Yorkers have been assisted with funding received from the city council. Last fiscal year alone, we assisted under 5,000 of your constituents. We are before you to the, the committee today, seeking a restoration of our $3.1 million allocation and asking for an increase of $1.5 million for the fiscal year 2025 to address the growing surge and demand for services from the communities we serve. Meetu?
Thank you. And thank you again, Chairperson Aviles, for holding this meeting. At councilmember locations, in addition to helping New York City immigrants become US citizens, we also assist them to adjust their status to become lawful permanent residents and file petitions on behalf of their family members. Beyond citizenship, we prioritize assisting with humanitarian benefits such as temporary protective status, TPS, and renewal of applications for Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, DACA. These are just some of the case types that we work on. A crucial component of our pro-state model is the distribution of information to the immigrant community about our services and the constantly changing immigration policies. We disseminate this information through media promotions, briefings, presentations at town halls, immigration forums, and tablings. In partnership with the city council, we aim to educate the immigrant population and offer a free, high-quality alternative to notarios and other unethical legal service providers. We are seeking a budgetary increase to expand our scope of services to New York City's recent migrants by providing asylum screenings, assisting with employment authorization applications, and providing orientations regarding immigration customs enforcement reporting and immigration court procedures. Additional funding will allow our attorneys to assist constituents to complete asylum applications. We note some immigration filing fees are increasing and some application forms are changing. On April 1st, 2024, that's right around the corner, we have recently began to see a surge in requests for appointments. With application filing fees for certain benefits, benefits significantly increasing, we are currently prioritizing the cases that will be most impacted by this increase. Further, in the upcoming months, as this is an election year, we are seeing an elevated demand for our citizenship services. Your expanded funding will allow CUNY Citizenship Now to provide these additional immigrants and all New York City immigrants continued access to free, high-quality, and confidential legal services. We thank you for your continued support and look forward to being able to expand our legal services to New York City's immigrant community. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Liza Schwartzwald with the New York Immigration Coalition, and thank you again to the council for your leadership on immigration issues. Now, New York seems to be at a crossroads in how and who it chooses to prioritize when budgets are concerned. False narratives of budget scarcity and scapegoating new arrivals have been used to justify unnecessary austerity measures that not only harm our most vulnerable communities, particularly Black, Brown, immigrant, and LGBTQ communities, but all New Yorkers. We must fund the following priorities and programs in the upcoming budget to protect the interest, safety, and quality of life of all New Yorkers. We must renew funding for critical outreach programs for immigrants, including the Access Health Initiative and the Key to the City Initiative, which help connect thousands of immigrant New Yorkers to critical services. We must ensure the restoration of funding to 3K and pre-K programs, which are only, which are often the only free early childhood education and care available to many immigrants. We must expand the promised New York City childcare voucher program-- We must expand the promised New York City childcare voucher program to at least $20 million to continue providing childcare to the youngest immigrant children who are not eligible for other forms of childcare vouchers. We must fully invest in the New York Public Schools and CUNY, including protecting and expanding investments in the six English-language learner transfer schools outside of Manhattan that support newcomers and asylum seeker students where they live and work, and international schools who specialize in supporting immigrant students. We must further protect programs at risk of the federal cliff, including translation and interpretation and immigrant family engagement programs. We must allocate funding in the city budget to expand city fets voucher programs, support INTRO-210 to end shelter restrictions, invest $58 million in immigrant legal services funding, invest $5 million in funding to maintain the city's language access worker cooperatives, which connect trained professional interpreters to city agencies and city-run providers while supporting immigrant New Yorkers to pursue careers as language services professionals. We must renew all Adult Literacy Initiative Council funding and baseline the full $21.7 million that is in the mayor's preliminary budget and restore funding for professional development and technical assistance for DYCD-funded adult literacy programs that was decoupled from the funding to the programs themselves in FY '24. In order to meet the overwhelming and unmet needs of New Yorkers, whether they've been here for 30 years or 30 days, we must act strategically and not in a reactionary manner. We applaud the council's commitment to championing realistic and responsible fiscal commitments that represent the needs of New Yorkers and the true state of our city's budget. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we look forward to working with you.
Good afternoon, Council Chair Aviles and members of the New York City Council Committee on Immigration. I am Margaret Martin, the co-director of Immigrant and Refugee Services, joined today by my fellow co-director, Kelly Agnew Barahas. We are here on behalf of Catholic Charities Community Services of the Archdiocese of New York. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony to you today. Catholic Charities is proud of our decades-long tradition of welcoming New York's immigrants and refugees. Our services have tremendous impact on communities across New York City and all five boroughs. The scope and diversity of our services is exceptional. With the arrival of more than 170,000 asylum seekers to New York City, each of our programming spaces has been profoundly impacted. We strongly recommend that the city council support efforts to improve overall coordination of legal and social services aimed at serving asylum seekers and to invest in building capacity for the long term. We urge the city council to advocate for maintaining the Action NYC in Schools program, which has provided critical legal services to thousands of schoolchildren, families, and community members in schools since 2016 in partnership with 129 New York City public schools. Urge the city council to ensure the ongoing support of the Haitian Response Initiative, which is a unique culturally and linguistically responsive program that redresses the disparate legal treatment and lack of resources available to the Haitian immigrant community. To ensure the continued support of Catholic Charities Action NYC Hotline, which provides critical legal information, appointments, and legal referrals to immigrant New Yorkers. To continue the support of Catholic Charities and the Immigrant Opportunity Initiative's Citywide Immigrant Legal Empowerment Collaborative, SILIC, which provides services in partnership with grassroots, community-based organizations for immigrant New Yorkers in hard-to-reach communities. And to continue support for the Legal Aid Society's Immigrant Opportunity Initiative, of which Catholic Charities is a subcontractor, providing legal representation for particularly vulnerable and underserved communities. And to maintain and expand the support of the ICARE Coalition, which provides legal assistance to record numbers of vulnerable children and families since 2016 in New York. Thank you. Excuse me, since 2014 in New York. Thank you.
I'll carry on for a few more points on behalf of Catholic Charities. Want to also emphasize that in addition to the new arrivals, our longstanding immigrant communities continue to need the support that they always have, and that the under-investment in these programs and critical services is really, you know, coming to a head at this point that these services are needed more than ever. So in particular, over the past two years, 25,000 Ukrainian arrivals have come to New York City. This would have been a much bigger story. Sorry, I'm on my new three minutes. As well as longstanding communities needing, you know, undocumented folks needing all sorts of different supports, language services, you know, resources, legal services, and information. So in particular, I just want to highlight two areas. One is that Catholic Charities is a member of our Day Laborer Worker Initiative and that we are seeing record numbers of waiting lists, you know, managing a huge demand of people seeking work safety training, the OSHA training. Need for Wage Theft Protection advocacy is skyrocketing, and we're wanting to invest and grow in that area in particular, as well as our, has been raised many times earlier today, the under-investment in adult literacy. In particular, the program that we run, we, you know, see members coming from all five boroughs because we're in a very accessible spot. That's one of the benefits of being in New York City, that people can choose where they want. So that particular model really eliminated a program like ours where people come from all over, people might come because of the diversity of different language learners, that they want to really have a different experience and not necessarily be in their own neighborhood for whatever reason. So we're seeing that it's a lack of flexibility in that model and really disadvantages a program like ours. So I would just, you know, urge for increased coordination. Overall, services are needing much more investment, longer, long-term programs that really can be multi-year, and for the city to be up to date with their, their payments is really important. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Aviles. My name is Harold Solis. I'm the co-legal director at Make the Road New York. On behalf of our 27,000 members and staff, I thank the committee for the opportunity to share our concerns with the fiscal year '25 budget and its impact on all immigrant New Yorkers. Make the Road firmly believes in safeguarding and promoting the dignity and fairness of all across our society, having centered our work around these principles for the last 25 years. However, recent times have seen a surge in calls for the city to abandon these principles, with the administration intent on slashing essential funding and attributing these cuts solely to the city's newest members. In the face of escalating scapegoating of immigrants, we implore you to shift the focus towards viable solutions. The city must fortify rather than undermine the critical services and funding that our diverse communities need. We ask the council to use every available tool to reverse the mayor's sweeping proposed cuts to vital services, which would force reductions in our city-funded legal health and educational services. Now, I'm going to focus on a couple of key concerns. The first one that comes to mind for us are the proposed, about $600,000 cuts that have been proposed to a program that's called the Rapid Response Legal Collaborative. I heard it mentioned in passing this morning, the RLC. The RLC has been instrumental in safeguarding the rights of immigrant New Yorkers on the brink of deportation. This is a program that's been exclusively designed to provide really highly complex immigration legal assistance to people who are on the verge of deportation. I literally have attorneys on my team who've pulled, thanks to their efforts, pulled people off the line who are on their way to a plane to be deported outside of the U.S. And a significant number of these individuals are in these situations due to the technical complexities of the immigration system and often despite having meritorious claims and defenses that would otherwise allow them to remain in the United States. In recent months, and the way this all ties into all of this, in recent months, the RLC has seen a substantial increase in referrals, often from the city's own asylum help center. This is ironic because at a time when we are receiving, you know, nearly 60% more compared to the prior years in terms of referrals from the city, to see that number of referrals and at the same time see these proposed cuts, it's really devastating and sends the wrong message. We strongly urge the committee to resist any cuts to this program. Second, our city-funded adult English classes help immigrant New Yorkers find better jobs and help their kids in school. This is common sense. Yet, we're hearing rumors about cuts. And at this time, we would ask the committee to work with DYCD to make some of the changes that were requested by the New York City Coalition for Adult Literacy. It's this time when we have to ask ourselves, how is it that we expect newcomers to the city to integrate and better assimilate themselves and navigate this city, and at the same time, we cut vital services that they might need? Our written testimony has more details, but I'll just say thank you for your support and for your leadership in this moment.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony. Just to note, we will be having a conversation with, within the preliminary budget where DYCD will be specifically on the adult literacy contract and the other problems that are emerging there. So you have our, our commitment as we've been working with the Coalition and other council members to, to do better, not only to maintain the funding, but to actually increase the funding. So we're working hard on that. You know, I guess I wanted to say to all of you, you know, thank you for the work that we know you are not being paid for, even when you're getting paid on time from the city. We know every agency has historically been front and center to community needs. So I want to personally thank you for that work. Our office has certainly benefited in partnership with, with CUNY, certainly in partnership with Make the Road and Catholic Charities, a long, long track record in this area. So I know you'll be sticking with us through this, and yes, the cuts and the face of not being necessary are particularly egregious. And we agree with you that this is not the place to cut services, particularly when you have a surplus. And navigating collectively, we're navigating this continued scapegoating that is happening that says we're being benevolent at the same time blaming everyone for everything, blaming migrants, new arrivals for everything, and, and the unsafe conditions that that creates in communities that we all know because we see it on a day-to-day basis. So I want to thank you for bringing insanity and leadership and services to vulnerable people who are just on their pathway to a healthy and dignified life. And so I want to thank you, and we'll continue to do that work together. And I just lastly have to point out, I'm preaching to the choir here, is the reason why I said 40% of New York City is immigrants over and over again. The budget of Moya is under $1 million. The budget of Owasu is $1.2 million. When we have a city budget, yes, there are additional services there that we all know about. Nevertheless, collectively, we have a budget of $109.6 billion. When 40% of our population are immigrants and could use a wide range of these services, it is grotesque that we have not figured out how to service people with dignity and to do a better job. Clearly, no one picked up on that in the prior panel. But I thank you, and we'll continue to fight for budget justice for our communities. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We will now turn to our next in-person panel. We'll hear from Ellen Pachnanda, Carla Ostolaza, Deborah Lee, Mark Valenari, Tanya Matos, And you may begin whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon. My name is Carla Ostolaza, and I'm the managing director of the Immigration Practice at the Bronx Defenders. Thank you, Chair Aviles, and this committee for the chance to speak about our work defending detained immigrants, immigrant New Yorkers. The committee's leadership was essential to the launching of the New York Immigrant Family Unity Project, NIFOP, 10 years ago, and its continued unwavering support has saved lives and brought hope to thousands of immigrants, immigrant families in despair. Together with Brooklyn Defender Services and the Legal Aid Society, we're requesting level funding of $16.6 million so that we can continue our critical work. Today, I'd like to share some information about ICE's rise in detention. We will get into other areas of need in our written testimony, but I wanted to share a little bit about ICE's rise in detention because it's a concerning matter for us. 39,000 people are currently in ICE detention. These are 39,000 human beings who have been separated from their families and communities, put in shackles, thrown in jail cells with abysmal conditions, and expected to navigate a highly complex legal system without representation. The 39,000 people ICE holds any given day represent an alarming 45% increase from last year. These are ICE's numbers, these are not CBP numbers, these are not the Border Patrol numbers. Our experience on the ground matches the story told by this nationwide statistic. This fiscal year, our holistic teams, made up of attorneys, social workers, legal advocates, and administrative professionals, have been working tirelessly to serve a rapidly increasing detained population. ICE is aggressively moving to detain New Yorkers based on minor even dismissed criminal charges, as well as targeting of longtime permanent residents for all convictions, without regard for their rehabilitation or their role in their families and communities. We have also noticed an increase in home rates in the city and of arrests at ICE's offices when immigrants go in for regular check-ins to try to meet reporting requirements. We expect this trend to escalate as the anti-immigrant sentiment continues to take hold. Given the upcoming federal elections, we're also preparing for a potential new administration that will double down on this trend. We need the council to continue its unwavering support of NIFOP so we can continue providing high-quality, client-centered representation to detain immigrant New Yorkers, as they are increasingly targeted for detention and exile. And we also appreciate and, you know, ask for the continued support of, of the council in maintaining our detainer laws and continuing to strengthen, strengthen those laws because it's completely connected, how our, our communities are targeted and funnelled to the deportation system. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Aviles. My name is Ellen Pachnanda, and I'm the director of the Immigration Practice at Brooklyn Defender Services. Our immigration practice protects the rights of immigrant New Yorkers by defending against ICE detention and deportation, minimizing the negative immigration consequences of criminal and family charges for non-citizens, and representing immigrants in applications for immigration benefits. Thank you, Chair, and this committee for the opportunity to testify about our budget needs to serve the immigrant community in New York City. As you know, our expertise lies in full representation in complex legal matters, where our clients have criminal or family system involvement. We represent long-term New York City residents in complex detained and non-detained immigration cases. We also represent recent arrivals who are targeted by the city's broken windows policies. Once our team secures clients' release, we continue representing them in complex non-detained matters. The enormous backlog of non-detained cases only grows, resulting in prejudicial consequences for our clients who are left in limbo. We applaud the city council's unwavering support for the detainer laws and encourage support for pending measures to strengthen these detainer laws, including the ICE-out legislative package of INTROs 158, 184, and 185. We strongly oppose any changes to existing detainer laws, which would allow local law enforcement to transfer anyone suspected of committing serious crimes to ICE. We thank this committee for its ongoing commitment to NIFOP and safeguarding New York City's immigrant community. This support is critical to allow us to respond to increased enforcement and federal policy shifts. Our requested funding of level funding of $16.6 million split between our three organizations will ensure that we can continue to provide the highest quality of legal services to immigrant New Yorkers. Thank you for your time.
My name is Deborah Lee, and I'm the attorney in charge of the Immigration Law Unit at the Legal Aid Society. We thank Chair Aviles for this opportunity and this committee for its historic support. As my colleagues from the Bronx Defenders and Brooklyn Defender Services have noted, we only expect a trend toward the increased detention and deportation of New Yorkers. This trend includes the resumption of deportations to Venezuela, a country which continues to suffer an utter breakdown in civil a country which continues to suffer an utter breakdown in civil government and protections. We are concerned by the mayor's statements about collaborating with ICE for anyone he suspects of committing a crime, whether a recent arrival or a long-term resident. Legal Aid is proud to have detainer laws here that ensure that New York City complies with its constitutional requirement of probable cause. Legal Aid is working at capacity to deal with the constant request for legal representation before the immigration court. Within our youth project alone, we take on at least two emergency special immigrant juvenile cases every single month, rushing to prepare clients, filings, and constantly pushing for family court hearing dates before our clients age out. All hands must be on deck to deal with these situations and to ensure that these clients can pursue SIDGE while concurrently addressing the social service and mental health needs of these clients with complex trauma histories. This is in addition to our work with existing clients and other new clients who are not in absolute last-minute crisis. We are committed to legal education, whether it be to a video about what will happen in immigration court, or providing an immigration 101 training to parents at PS 139 and 315 who have banded together to support families at Floyd Bennett Field. To support our efforts, Legal Aid is asking for straight restoration of our NIFOP funding, $5,533,333 for each provider, a total of $16.6 million, an increase in our unaccompanied minors and families funding to $1.85 million to reflect our costs after five years of flat funding and increased demand. In anticipation of an RFP for our Immigrant Opportunities Initiative work, Legal Aid would like to highlight concerns submitted to HRA DSS with our concept paper with other providers. We will provide a copy to this committee with our written testimony. Legal Aid is committed to fighting for immigrants' rights and asks this committee to remain steadfast in its commitment. Thank you again for this opportunity to appear before you today.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman. My name is Tanya Matos. I'm the interim Executive Director at Unlocal. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, Chairwoman. Unlocal is a community-centered nonprofit organization that provides direct immigration legal representation and community education to New York's undocumented immigrant communities. I'm here to talk about two programs. One is the Pro Se Plus Project, and the other is the Rapid Response Legal Collaborative. The Pro Se Plus Project is a strategic collaboration between Unlocal African Communities Together, Catholic Migration Services, Central American Legal Assistance, NILAG, MASA, and Venezuelans and Immigrants Aid. And we're partially funded by the city. In 2023, we've conducted 90 community presentations, had 35 trainings where we trained over almost 2,000 supporters, helped 13 legal clinics, and helped thousands of individuals apply for asylum. Now in 2023, we're set to enhance our Pro Se model and support by extending beyond the initial filing of asylum applications. Our expansion includes preparing people for court, preparing declarations for hearings, compiling country conditions, et cetera. And in many cases, we provide friend-of-the-court appearances and take on full representation of cases. We urge the city to continue investment in our proven model, which has offered a crucial legal support to thousands of people in the immigration cases. But we're afraid that this may be similar to year-by-year funding that we'd have to fight for. So we encourage them, multi-year funding, to happen for the Pro Se Plus Project. And finally, I want to address the profound impact of the mayor's announced budget cuts impacting the Rapid Response Legal Collaborative, a collaborative involving Unlocal, Make the Road, and New York Legal Assistance Group. And I'm profoundly concerned about the proposed loss of city funding to this program. This program was established during the Trump administration, and we exclusively take on deportation, people with deportation orders for longstanding residents and for new New Yorkers. We provide vital free legal services that would otherwise cost thousands of dollars. And it basically is community members' last stance before being deported. It stands as a unique and invaluable project in the entire country. Unfortunately, the mayor has proposed slashing the budget. And referrals to the RLC have doubled since last October. And ironically, like Make the Road mentioned, is that many of these referrals come from the city's own asylum centers. So we urge you to collaborate with nonprofits and reconsider these cuts and fund the Rapid Response Legal Collaborative, as it is a vital safeguard in rights and livelihoods of our fellow New Yorkers, and join us in preserving it. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Chair Aviles and the committee, and thank you. My name is Mark Valenati, and I'm the Assistant Director for Immigrant and Domestic Violence Services at NIMIC, which is actually celebrating their 45th year as a settlement house, serving communities across New York with a focus on Washington Heights and the Bronx. Our memo goes further into our legal services, including immigration and our funding sources. City funding initiatives enable us to provide a variety of services that impact thousands of immigrant New Yorkers. However, NIMIC and other providers are on the brink of crisis. Moya, which has funded the successful nine-year Action NYC program, will terminate the program at the end of the calendar year. In its place, a concept paper has for drastically more of our organizations with no additional funding. The paper will also completely restructure our services and end valuable access points, like libraries and hospitals, we terminated. This will have a dire effect on our communities. Other long dependable funders, like DYCD, have signaled their intent to possibly reduce funding or restrict services to our most vulnerable populations. Your support for robust and stable funding for our work can send a strong message to city funders and will make a huge difference in the lives of our community members, like NIMIC's client, John. John was 17 when he came to NIMIC through our Action NYC hotline. He had entered the U.S. as a tourist alone and was only asking about a student visa. However, during a follow-up consult, John revealed to the attorney he couldn't go back to his home country in Africa, where he had been attacked at a political demonstration brutally and was hospitalized. He feared for his life and had to flee. Unfortunately, due to complications with his foreign citizenship, John was not eligible for asylum. However, NIMIC's legal team pivoted to a new strategy and successfully represented John in a special immigrant juvenile status application. After several years of representation and advocacy, John finally received his green card this January. He also recently earns his associate's degree in computer science from Bronx Community College. Moya's concept paper will effectively end the Action NYC program and will render NIMIC and other community nonprofits unable to provide the vital, long-term support necessary for clients like John. The only way to preserve life-changing funding in immigrant legal programs is to, the only way to preserve life-changing immigrant legal programs is to ensure a stable infrastructure of funding in the city. Thank you again for your time and support, and we look forward to continuing to partner with the city council to ensure our immigrant communities are welcomed and supported.
Thank you to the committee and Chair Aviles for inviting testimony today. My name is Alex Rizio. I'm the Managing Attorney for Policy and Partnerships at Safe Passage Project, a nonprofit legal services organization that provides free legal representation to immigrant children facing deportation. We currently serve over 1,300 children who live in the five boroughs of New York City and the two counties of Long Island. Safe Passage works closely with partner organizations through the iCare Coalition with the goal of providing high-quality legal representation to as many unaccompanied minors as possible. We continue to stand ready to serve children facing deportation, but we have a long waiting list of potential clients, as cases currently take five to seven years to complete. Once we accept a client's case, we stick with them through their case's end, which is hopefully a green card. As you know, no immigrant, not even a child, is appointed a lawyer in immigration court. If a child cannot afford to hire a lawyer, they're forced to defend themselves alone against a trained government prosecutor and a judge, with deportation back to dangerous conditions as the likely outcome. Safe Passage helps correct this injustice by providing free attorneys to kids. Beyond legal services, our social work team addresses the broader needs of clients, such as school enrollment, housing, access to healthcare, psychological services, and public benefits. We receive funding from the city council through the UMFI funding stream and New York State, as well as private foundations and donors. Unaccompanied minors are not generally bussed to New York City. Instead, they're processed by the Federal Office of Refugee Resettlement and are ultimately released to live with family members who already reside in New York. In other words, unaccompanied minors will arrive in New York to reunite with family, regardless of what certain governors do. Because of conditions in their home countries, the numbers of unaccompanied minors arriving in New York have increased steadily over the past several years. Here, they encounter a backlog court system and hard-line immigration policies. Despite the increase in the number of youth who require legal services, the city council has not increased our coalition's funding in several years. Legal service providers are already at capacity, with caseloads that approach the unsustainable. We need resources to develop long-term hiring plans, time to scale up services, and to recruit and train attorneys. And we need to be able to plan for the five to seven years it takes for a case's start to finish. We have the expertise to accomplish this, but need increased investment from government entities to make it happen. We're asking the city council to continue to fund this important work, and we are asking individual council members to consider additional support through local and youth discretionary funding or other legal services initiatives. In the face of extreme court dysfunction and backlogs, nonprofits like Safe Passage Project are ready to continue providing human-centered, trauma-informed services for our clients.
Thank you all for your testimony and the work you do, and your patience in sitting through the hearing. Noted. Thank you very much to this panel for your testimony. We'll now call up our next in-person panel. We'll hear from Lena Cohen, Ira Yankwit, Sierra Craft, Vladimir Martinez, and Sophie Delsimer. You may begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Chair Aviles. My name is Ira Yankwit, and I'm the Executive Director of the Literacy Assistance Center. I'm also a proud member of the New York City Coalition for Adult Literacy. As you know, DYCD currently has an open RFP that will fund community-based organizations to lead adult basic education, high school equivalency, and English for speakers of other language programs for the next three to six years. DYCD has structured this RFP to prioritize residents of the highest poverty, lowest educational attainment, most limited English proficient neighborhoods in the city. We unequivocally support this goal. Unfortunately, the way DYCD has structured the RFP through a two-tier funding competition could effectively render up to 70% of the current community-based adult literacy providers non-competitive, forcing them to close their classes and displace thousands of the very students that DYCD is aiming to serve. We are grateful to you, Councilmember Aviles, as well as to council members, Juan and Stevens, every single member of this committee, and the 32 additional council members who signed on to your letter urging DYCD to revise this counterproductive competition model and to extend the proposal deadline. The irony is that while DYCD wants to address neighborhoods with the highest needs, the $11.85 million in funding in this RFP is $5 million less than the $16.83 million in administration-side funding for DYCD adult literacy contracts in FY '24. This means that this RFP will serve just over 9,100 students annually, a significant decrease from the 16,000-plus that DYCD reported serving in FY '23, and less than one-half of 1% of the 2.2 million adult New Yorkers in need. At the same time, the mayor's preliminary budget for FY '25 includes $21.7 million for DYCD adult literacy, nearly $10 million, or 85% more than what is currently included in the RFP. If this additional funding could get baselined and included in the RFP, DYCD could do some combination of the following three things. First, it could increase the per-student funding rate, which would make it more realistic for smaller organizations, those that don't have additional sources of revenue to supplement the DYCD funding, to apply under this RFP, and to be able to provide more comprehensive services. Second, it could increase the number of neighborhood tabulation areas, or NTAs, designated for funding, and increase the number of students served through the RFP. Third, it could create a second, non-NTA-based competition for providers who wish to run borough-wide and/or citywide programs and increase the number of students served through this RFP. With the March 20 deadline for organizations to submit proposals fast approaching, we urge this committee to get clarity on the funding and push for a baselining of the full $21.7 million, as well as to continue to push to fix the competition model and extend the deadline further. Thank you for your attention.
Good afternoon, Chair Aviles. My name is Lena Cohen. I'm here representing United Neighborhood Houses. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. UNH is a policy and social change organization. We represent 46 settlement houses, 40 of which are in New York City. And altogether, our members touch the lives of 765,000 New Yorkers each year. Today, I want to draw your attention to critical issues affecting our city's immigrant population. And I want to begin with adult literacy education. With nearly 1 million adults in New York City lacking proficiency in English, DYCD has a chance to address this through its open RFP, which I know that you're familiar with, Chair. However, its two-tiered structure, which my colleague Ira just walked through, may inadvertently exclude many current providers, jeopardizing services for thousands of learners. We recognize DYCD's efforts to increase adult literacy services in parts of the city that may never have had them before. But we cannot do that at the expense of the current students that are utilizing these programs. In light of increasing demand for literacy services, especially with new asylum seekers in the city, we must focus on growing the system overall rather than rearranging resources. Furthermore, our immigrant families face a dire need for affordable childcare. We're grateful to the council for supporting the Promise NYC program, which has been a lifeline, offering subsidized childcare to undocumented children. But funding is set to expire, leaving families in their state of limbo, which they're in right now. So we're asking the city to invest $20 million in the fiscal year 2025 budget to sustain Promise NYC. Additionally, the 60-day limit on shelter stays for asylum-seeking families has really exacerbated changes, as I know you're familiar with. We've seen it disrupt children's education. We've seen it disrupt family stability. We urge the city to provide additional support, including transportation assistance and streamlined enrollment processes to ensure these families receive the care they deserve. So in closing, thank you again for this opportunity to speak. UNH is proud to stand with our partners in urging the city council to continue putting pressure on DYCD to make sure that this forthcoming adult literacy procurement is as successful as we need it to be. And we look forward to collaborating on early childhood education and ensuring that families have a stable path forward to stay in the city. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairperson Aviles and Immigration Committee, for inviting testimony. My name is Sierra Craft, and I'm the Executive Director at the iCare Coalition. We're a coalition of legal service organizations providing free representation to unaccompanied immigrant children facing deportation in New York City, while advocating for universal access to counsel. So New York continues to rank fourth in the highest in the country for the number of unaccompanied arrivals, with over 8,500 young New Yorkers arriving annually. And every year, thousands of children, including infants, are placed in removal proceedings up against a trained lawyer if they cannot find or afford an attorney. And without representation, they stand a mere 15% chance of winning their cases, resulting in rapid deportation back to countries where their lives are at risk. And this is even if they have a viable form of relief. With support from city council through the Unaccompanied Minors and Families Initiative, since 2014, you've made it possible for the iCare providers to stand alongside over 12,000 young immigrants, defending them from deportation. Children represented by iCare attorneys have over a 90% success rate, providing them the opportunity to pursue higher education, meaningful careers, and take on leadership roles in the city they now call home. Our providers have decades of experience in providing culturally responsive and trauma-informed services to this vulnerable population. And iCare attorneys, as we've heard from some of our colleagues and providers already, they are on the front they are on the front lines every day, defending immigrant rights and upholding New York’s values. However, we have not received an increase in funding for over five years now. While thousands of young immigrants await legal support, our wait lists are out of control, and they remain vulnerable to detention as we speak. So today, I’m here to urgently call upon the Immigration Committee to prioritize funding for the many unaccompanied minors in New York City who are reliant on iCare’s critical legal services. Our coalition comprises of seven providers that collectively are seeking $4.9 million this year, and are ready to serve nearly 1,700 children and families through legal screenings, know-your-rights trainings, direct representation, and referrals to city and social services. But we need your support and advocacy to ensure that we’re not putting these young people in harm’s way. Now more than ever, it is critical that we stand in solidarity with children seeking safety, protection, and a new life in this country. We look forward to our continued partnership with you to ensure our values as a sanctuary city. Thank you for your attention and commitment to upholding the well-being of the vulnerable members of our community.
Good afternoon, Chair Aviles. My name is Sophie Dalsimer, and I am co-director of the Health Justice Program at New York Lawyers for the Public Interest. We are privileged to be a part of the council’s Immigrant Health Initiative, and we thank you for your lat support. Today, I’m here to ask the council to continue your support by restoring and enhancing funding for the Immigrant Health Initiative, which has saved lives and improved health outcomes across the city. Continued and enhanced funding is critical, given the increased arrival of immigrants to our city and the regular deployment of immigration policy as a political bargaining chip on both national and local scales. In particular, we want to commend this committee for pushing back on the mayor’s callous shelter eviction rules, and we’d like to highlight some of the health implications of these policies. Specifically, as advocates for immigrant access to healthcare, we are concerned about people losing access to health insurance after enrollment if they are forced to relocate and then miss receiving notices to complete the enrollment process. We are also concerned about people losing access to health services or being unable to receive care due to a lack of stable address. For example, we’ve already seen an individual who is a recently arrived immigrant living with kidney failure, who was unable to continue accessing care even though he had been enrolled in health insurance, and also could not access transplant care without a stable address. I’d also like to note that through our intakes, we have heard reports of very inconsistent policies when it comes to gaining appointments at the city-run asylum application support centers across the shelters. The city must continue to uphold access to healthcare for all New Yorkers, including those served by our programs, such as people who identify as transgender or gender expansive, and those living with HIV, and those who are undocumented and uninsured, and New Yorkers who are detained by ICE. The needs of these communities are as great as ever, and with the newly anticipated budget surplus, meeting these needs is firmly within reach. Thank you again for your continued support and the opportunity to speak today.
Good afternoon, Chair Aviles. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Vladimir. My pronouns are he and him, and I’m the Director of Policy and Government Affairs at the LGBT Community Center in New York City. New York City’s LGBT community formed the LGBT Center in 1983 in response to the AIDS epidemic, ensuring a place for LGBTQ+ people to access information, care, and support that they were not receiving elsewhere. We are constantly in that moment, again, in the city. Now, we are the largest LGBT multi-service organization on the East Coast, and we see almost 6,000 weekly visitors through our doors and host over 400 community group meetings each month. Our written testimony has more information about our work, but I’m going to skip to some of the more salient points here. First, we want to just highlight that immigration is an LGBTQ+ issue. Over the last two years, the center, in close partnership with the New York State LGBT Health and Human Services Network, which is administered by the center, has been working to identify and highlight the needs and concerns facing LGBTQ+ immigrants in New York, and across New York City and across our state, and to find short and long-term solutions to those issues. Of course, that work has taken new form, and new and more urgent forms over the last couple of months, due to the growing humanitarian crises our city faces by new New Yorkers, and the supports needed to keep those families and individuals safe and able to integrate into our communities. Our communities are facing challenges that include a general lack of access to services due to increased backlogs, food insecurity, housing insecurity, and I’ll just note in the housing insecurity space, many LGBTQ folks are facing discrimination from others that are housed with them, but also from city staff as they are staying in city shelters, and that is obviously unacceptable for us. Our communities are also facing employment insecurity and discrimination based on immigration status, but also based on their identification as a member of the LGBTQ+ community, transportation issues, navigation issues around health insurance, work authorization, and other public benefits, issues accessing IDNYC, which I will point out is a program specifically meant to address the needs of immigrants and LGBTQ+ people. That intersection is important. And of course, alarming rates of xenophobia in the media and across New York City. Just this year, we began working with a broad coalition of New York City organizations that exist at the intersection of immigration and LGBTQ+ issues and service provision to outline a plan for tackling the specific challenges faced by LGBTQ+ newly arrived immigrants. We are in the early stages of our work, but will look to partner with the City Council to help our city correct course on this important matter. And I know my time is up, but most immediately, we’re calling on the City Council and the mayor to increase existing funding lines and agency spending, and I will list a few specific council initiatives that you may look at. The Youth and Poverty Initiative, the Trans Equity Initiative, and the Hate Crimes Prevention Initiative are well-placed for increases, because we are continuing to serve communities based, and we don’t discriminate based on folks’ immigration status. So, our organization and many organizations here are continuing to serve folks with the current funding we are receiving, but that obviously is not a sustainable way to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you to the entire panel, and again, we hear this consistent threat of funding having been, not baseline, consistent, regardless of the increasing need, the increasing costs of goods and services, and appropriately paying people for their work. So, we hear, I hear this huge challenge. We must do better as a city and look at where we are placing our money, because we seem to be, yesterday I learned, it costs over $500,000 to detain someone in Rikers Island. That is not a good use of taxpayer dollars. We have all the services here that we need, that produce safety and support and provide dignity. We have to do better at adjusting our budget to where we really need to focus. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you very much to this panel for your testimony. We will now call our final in-person panel, which will consist of Ana Galayana, Vianey Romero Mendez, Kimberly Vega, and Dimitri Daniel Glinsky. If you are here to testify in person, and I have not called your name yet, please visit the sergeant’s table and complete a witness slip now, even if you registered to testify online. So with that as well, Lorena Kurusias, if you’re here, to testify, please complete a witness slip. And you may begin when ready.
My name is Abigail Dorison, and I am the organizing manager of La Culmina. La Culmina is an immigrant and workers’ rights center based on Staten Island that focuses on empowering the immigrant worker through education, culture, and organizing. We form part of the Day Laborer and Domestic Worker Initiative. Through these two initiatives, we provide support to day laborers and domestic workers. We have been in the forefront for many emergencies, such as when COVID-19 hit our cities, or when the city needs support when there are severe weather condition. But in general, our work allows us to be there for the community when we are needed the most. Recently, our work has allowed us to be on the forefront to support our new neighbors. For example, our centers have seen thousands of new arrivals this past year, meanwhile supporting long-term immigrants who have been here for years. We support new arrivals by providing them with construction classes, OSHA SSC, scaffolding, flagger training. Furthermore, we provide childcare and cleaning services training, and also provide know-your-right workshops, to let them know about their rights at their job site, plus provide legal services in ESL classes. However, one of the most important things that we provide is a community. It is beautiful to hear directly from new arrivals that they feel supported, that they feel part of a community, that they feel like a Staten Islander. We do this work despite the challenges that we face each time on Staten Island by NT Immigrant Group. However, through this council’s support, we have been able to keep moving forward and provide these services to both new arrivals and long-term immigrants. It is important for this council to continue supporting La Culmina, so Staten Island is supported. Thank you, Chairwoman, for this opportunity to testify on behalf of Staten Island today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, esteemed Chair Aviles. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I am Vianey Romero Mendez, Director of Programs at MISTECA organization. I stand here today before you to highlight the invaluable support of our organization, extending to the Latinx and Indigenous immigrant community in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, and greater New York City. As you consider the distribution of resources in the forthcoming budget, I urge you to acknowledge MISTECA’s critical role in providing essential services to our immigrant neighbors. As an immigrant myself, I deeply understand the significance of organizations like MISTECA in supporting and serving marginalized communities. Reflecting on my own journey and my parents’ struggles upon arriving in this vibrant city, sorry, vibrant city, I firmly wish for a resource like MISTECA to lean on for support. MISTECA services serves as a beacon of hope and assistance for countless immigrants, offering guidance through bureaucratic processes, language assistance, and cultural support. Currently, we are seeing data of assisting approximately 150 to 200 individuals weekly, addressing basic needs like toiletries, food, clothing, adult literacy, workforce development, and mental health services, among many more. MISTECA’s holistic approach is noted in understanding the unique experiences of Latinx and Indigenous immigrants. Insurance services are tailored to their needs. However, our capacity to serve is limited by space. Therefore, we seek expansion to meet growing demands. In considering resource allocations, I implore you to prioritize funding for MISTECA. We are a frontline organization vital in providing services to our immigrant community. Your support is essential in obtaining capital funding for expand and continue to deliver cultural comprehensive services. We welcome the opportunity to collaborate further, ensuring every member of our community has the resources to thrive in New York City. Thank you for your attention to this pressing matter.
Good afternoon, Honorable Members of the New York City Council. My name is Ana Galayana, and I am a single mom of kids. I came to this country when I was 17 years old, looking for a better life. Unlike many immigrants, I faced many difficulties. The language, the culture, and even the food were not the same. Trying to fit in a foreign country has been the biggest challenge of my life. But after my kids were born, the difficulties increased. It was hard to navigate the system, because I didn’t know the language, and I had no idea about the resources that were available for immigrants like me. I am a DB survivor, and despite the trauma and the difficulties that my family and I went through, I went back to school, got my GED, then my associate’s, and finally, last year, my bachelor’s degree. All of that would not be possible without the help of my community surrounding me. I received support and information from teachers of my kids about how to get my GED. My GED teacher gave me information about colleges. My DB therapist gave me information about scholarships, and the rest is history. All of that was possible because organizations like MISTECA exist. During the pandemic in 2020, I arrived in MISTECA seeking help. 2020 was a difficult year for everyone, and many immigrant families suffered. I was desperate, because I reached a point in which I didn’t have enough money to pay rent or buy food. In MISTECA, I received the support that I needed. They were able to provide the community with resources such as boxes of food. MISTECA does vital work within the community. After seeing the amazing work they do, I started getting involved as a volunteer, and now, I can proudly say I am part of the team as an advocate. I am happy to give back to the community the same support that I received when I needed, and as an advocate, I know I can make a difference in someone’s life. Thanks to MISTECA, our community can have access to resources that can change their lives, just as they changed mine. I ask that you please consider supporting MISTECA and similar organizations that bring a helping hand to immigrant communities. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I’m Dimitri Daniel Glinsky, President and CEO of Russian-speaking Community Council, 12-year-old CBO-based 513 organization based in Washington Heights, but now serving asylum seekers from across the city. So, thank you for this opportunity, and I really mean that, because having spoken here maybe 10 times over the past decade, I know of no other venue where we or others from our exile community can be heard by our city government and other CBOs on a regular basis. So today for us is really about raising wider awareness of our core constituency, that is, a special subset of immigrants, exiles from dictatorships, mainly Russia, and refugees from Ukraine and other countries maimed by these regimes. By exiles, we mean those who had to leave their countries because of having stood up for democracy, justice, and human rights. For lawyers around here, strong asylum cases. And yet, this very rapidly growing segment of population and their CBOs here in New York have too often been muted by business partners and beneficiaries of their oppressors, that is, of the root cause of our migration. For many years, this direct and indirect enablers of foreign autocrats and oligarchs have wielded influence in New York’s real estate, helping inflate housing prices, in finance law, and thus also in philanthropies and other agencies involved with Russian-Americans, in ethnic media, at times in some government offices, mainly in parts of South Brooklyn, but not only. Meanwhile, we at RCC and similar projects had no funds for paid staff for nearly 12 years, but we were never going to quit our organizing and advocacy. Last year, our persistence got rewarded with success, partnership with Catholic charities. This has been a true blessing and a historic breakthrough for the community. It finally lets us serve people like us on a professional basis, at least part-time for now. We are providing benefit screening, navigation, referrals, know-your-rights, and pro se legal information. We actually have published online a pro bono handbook in Russian for asylum seekers, first ever, in collaboration with attorneys from AELA, and on occasion, we provide free food, clothes, and metro cards. We’re seeing asylum seekers from all former Soviet countries, and of course, we’re open to serving all others. This is thanks to the New York State OTDA funding. We haven’t had any funds originating from the city for seven years. I also thank Lutheran Church of our Savior’s atonement for generously providing space for our services. I urge the council to expand and certainly not to cut support for Catholic charities programming, especially long-term capacity building, as their services and contracting are the most inclusive of the widest ratio of immigrants that we’ve ever seen. And finally, back to the exiles. In the spirit of what I have said, I know this is unrelated maybe to the main topic, but I submit a petition launched by others to co-name the strip of land next to the Russian consulate, Alexei Navalny’s Way, not just for his courage and sacrifice, but for the thousands of Russian-American New Yorkers, and not only them, other Americans who are running for his release and are mourning him there. We are aware of the community board’s process for this, but we urge council members to also find ways to help this get done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you to this panel, and particular shout-out to MISTECA, who’s in my community, and I see firsthand the work that they do every day with so much dignity, grace, and love. And Culmina, y’all in Staten Island, but you really belong to me in South Brooklyn, but thank you all for your testimony, and your testimony of doing this work for so many years without having received any support from anyone, and your perseverance to continue and not to quit is the story of... and not to quit is the story of resilience of all our communities, and we share that and hope we must do better to make sure we get all the full support to support all the communities that come here and call home. So I thank you for your testimony and this continued advocacy to do better and to live into our ideals as a country, right? And we celebrate human rights and dignity for all, so thank you.
Thank you so much for your kind words. We will certainly be very grateful for operating support wherever it can come from.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to this panel for your testimony. We will now turn to testimony on Zoom. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. We will now hear testimony from Rex Chen, followed by Melissa Chua, followed by Oriana Shulavitz Rosado.
You may begin.
My name is Rex Chen. My pronouns are he/him. I'm the Immigration Director at Legal Services NYC, and I'm going to cover three points. My first point is that we're doing immigration services, but much more than just immigration services. With critical help from our social workers, our team meets asylum seekers and helps them on a wide range of issues. It could be education enrollment. We're doing things with public benefits. We also have a lot of housing lawyers working on issues. Asylum seekers have many needs to be able to win the legal protections that they qualify for. Disruptions such as the thirty-sixty-day rule for the shelters makes things much harder for them, also makes it harder for us, those trying to help them on their cases. My second point is that, LSNYC, if we just focus on our immigration work, we're helping many people. We help thousands of New Yorkers every year. In 2020, there were twenty-five thousand people in the households that received our immigration help. And my third thing is that I want to point out that we are actually trying to tackle some of the new complex immigration issues and develop resources for our staff and others in the field. Last year, we filed lawsuits to try to help asylum seekers who've been stuck in an infinite wait to get an asylum interview. The government agreed to set asylum interviews for more than twenty of our clients who were stuck in that backlog. In a few weeks, we're actually giving a training to try to address how immigration judges have an anti-black bias when they make their rulings, including in asylum cases. We're going to train immigration lawyers to say something in court to immigration judges to interrupt their unconscious bias before they make their ruling. And we plan to share our materials with immigration lawyers around the country. We're also giving trainings over Zoom to hundreds of people on different immigration issues. So for this year, I'll mention two trainings we've already done. My teammates gave a training on preparing for asylum interviews. About a hundred fifty people came. And with the help of Unlocal, one of my coworkers gave a training on winning immigration appeals, and around a hundred people came to that. So those are my three main points, which are that we're helping with much more than just immigration. When we do our immigration work, we help so many people every year, and we're working on very ambitious projects. If I, in closing, I'll just mention that one issue we've heard today is the need to be strategic, and we can see that there's a need to ramp up legal services for long-term representation beyond quick pro se services. And I think that's very important. That ship needs to start now, because if it doesn't start now, it actually could cost a premium to the city if it's not prepared and it sees the need, and then suddenly has to quickly hire many people to work on the need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll next hear from Melissa Chua, followed by Oriana Shulavitz Rosado, followed by Carlyn Cohen.
You may begin.
Thank you. Chairviewers, council members, and staff, thank you, and good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about the preliminary budget for next year. My name is Melissa Chua, and I am the co-director of the Immigrant Protection Unit at the New York Legal Assistance Group, NILAG. I do not need to reemphasize for this committee the numbers of new New Yorkers that have arrived since April of 2022. At NILAG, we have stretched our existing services to meet the needs of newly arrived immigrants and have, alongside with our community-based organizations on the ground, created new and dynamic programming to provide quality services to as many people as possible. For example, as my colleague at Unlocal has discussed, NILAG, along with our partners, have served thousands of individuals through the Prose Plus project, and we are providing highly complex, time-sensitive services to newly arrived immigrants who are already post-deportation order through the Rapid Response Legal Collaborative. While the city has invested heavily in an infrastructure aimed solely at providing pro se assistance, the initial application for asylum is merely the first step to securing long-term stability and protection for families. The process of winning asylum and maintaining work authorization is a long and complex one that requires assistance and intervention along the way. Programs like the Prose Plus Project and the Full Representation offered through the Immigrant Opportunities Initiative are crucial for ensuring that families do not only apply, but win asylum. This is necessary for ensuring that individuals maintain their ability to work and gain stability. Similarly, NILAG and the Rapid Response Legal Collaborative continue to receive referrals, as has been discussed many directly from the city's asylum seeker center for individuals who've been ordered removed through no fault of their own or after pro se proceedings that are legally deficient and void of due process. Notwithstanding this, programs like the Rapid Response Legal Collaborative face continuing cuts, even as the need for our services has increased dramatically. Our programming serving existing New Yorkers similarly faces dire cuts. For example, the proposed RFP for Action NYC would end NILAG's legal services in HMH Hospitals through the city, cutting off services to thousands of New Yorkers. In fact, this is one of the very programs cited by Moir earlier as one of the few nonprofits serving children. The proposed RFP for Action NYC would also endanger NILAG's ability to provide wide-ranging legal services to some of the most underserved and long-residing immigrant communities in New York City. Having worked with immigrants in New York City for many years, we encourage the city to continue and increase investment in legal services and community-based organizations that have the expertise to provide long-term effective assistance.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and your work.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Members of New York City Council, my name is Oriana Shulavitz Rosado. I am the Policy and Advocacy Strategist at Immigrant Arc. Immigrant Arc is a coalition of over eighty-member organizations that provide legal services across the state of New York. I am here to advocate for the urgent and crucial need for our city to fund long-term immigration legal services and get us out of this cyclical emergency state. The arrival of our new neighbors is an opportunity to build long-term immigration legal infrastructure that would benefit both new immigrants and existing immigrant communities. The way our city's administration is currently handling the cyclical increase in new arrivals, legal service providers are forced into states of emergency. Legal service providers across the five boroughs have attempted to rise to this challenge, making Herculean efforts to come together to provide rapid response services. Our members, other legal service organizations, and the city are hosting many small temporary rapid response clinics across the city. These clinics meet an important need, but they do not provide migrants with long-term representation, which can be a huge issue since the majority of asylum applications require follow-up. Pairing rapid response efforts with long-term legal representations and wraparound services is the only viable solution to ensure migrants do not fall through the cracks in our immigration process. Immigrant Arc recommends that what is needed to meet this moment is greater transparency from city agencies, strategic coordination from the city and state governments with legal service providers and community-based organizations, and funding for long-term immigration legal services, which includes the following: investing fifty-eight million for immigration legal services, which goes to the following citywide initiatives; thirty-one million from the mayor's Immigrant Opportunities Initiative, which have been threatened by budget cuts, including such crucial programs like the Action NYC and the Rapid Response Legal Collaborative; six-point-six million to Knife Up, a first-in-the-nation program that provides free immigration legal services to low-income New Yorkers; four-point-nine million for iCare, which provides representation to unaccompanied minors and families in removal proceedings; three-point-three million for QD Citizenship Now, which provides legal services to people on their path to citizenship; and two-point-six million for City Council's Immigration Opportunity Initiatives. Separately, there is a need in investing twenty million to support immigration legal services, and another one million in a pilot program to provide immigration legal service clients with wraparound and holistic case management services. This situation is only a crisis because our city's administration makes it one. New York City will always be a home to immigrants. If we work with our legal service providers and properly fund immigration services, we can ensure that our city continues to flourish alongside its immigrant communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
You may begin. You may begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Carlyn Cohen. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm the Chief Policy and Public Affairs Officer of the Chinese-American Planning Council, CPC. CPC serves over eighty thousand Asian-American immigrant and low-income New Yorkers in all fifty-nine neighborhoods of New York City each year. Thank you so much, Chair Avelis, and the council for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing. While many of my colleagues have listed a number of important immigrant-serving initiatives that we as CPC support greatly, I want to uplift a couple in particular, and the full list is included in our written testimony that we are submitting. First up, Promise NYC. CPC is one of the designated sites for Promise NYC, and we have been working with undocumented families, including asylum seeker families and families in Queens to help them enroll for childcare. One of our community members came to us from Venezuela, and she came because her oldest child could not get necessary lifesaving medical treatment. And since then, she has been able to help her child get the lifesaving medication and treatment that she needs to survive, and has been relying on Promise NYC to be able to work while her child gets treatment and care. This is just one story of many, and CPC experienced that we enrolled, in fact, our community member allotment within the first couple of months and have waiting lists of hundreds of community members long for this critical program. So we urge the city not only to increase investment to at least twenty million, but also to baseline funding so that families can have that stability year after year. We also want to highlight the changes to the adult literacy program. At a time that adult literacy is needed more than ever to continuing welcoming new immigrants to New York City, we've seen the RFP that come out that threatens to cut programs for about sixty percent of the current providers by designated preferred neighborhoods in the new RFP program. CPC, for example, although we serve community members that live in the identified neighborhood targets, we do not have program sites within those neighborhoods, so we risk losing slots for six hundred community members to learn English. Again, we appreciate that the city is trying to focus on underserved neighborhoods, but this can be accomplished by adding additional slots and additional funding for adult literacy so that community members across our city can be served, not by rearranging and restricting those slots. So we really encourage the release of the RFP anew and also to increase and baseline funding by at least twenty-one million in adult literacy. In addition to that, we urge the ending of the sixty-day shelter rule. It has been wreaking havoc on our community members that have coming in and need and support. We encourage the increase in legal services funding for our immigrant community members, and we encourage investment in the AAPI Community Support Initiative to support Asian-American and immigrant New Yorkers. And lastly, we are strong supporters of the Just Pay Initiative because we know that our staff that are working in and out every single day to serve immigrant New Yorkers are not getting paid the wages that they deserve. And by adding in a COLA and a wage floor for our human services workers, we can best serve all of our immigrant community members. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. As a quick reminder for virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. We'll next hear from Mohammed Q. Amin, followed by Catalina Bustamante, followed by Alex Martinez.
You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Mohammed Q. Amin. I am the founder and executive director of the Caribbean Equality Project. On behalf of its four thousand-plus community members and staff, thank you to Chair Alexa Avelis and the community on immigration for holding this hearing and providing this opportunity to testify. Caribbean Equality Project is a New York City-based community organization that empowers advocates for and represents Afro and Indo-Caribbean LGBTQ immigrants. We mobilize low-income, undocumented asylum seekers and working-class Caribbean LGBTQ communities across New York City on immigration, workers' rights, healthcare, housing, and civic engagement to build political power through culturally responsive educational programming and advocacy. New York City is home to the largest Caribbean foreign-born population, many of whom who live in Caribbean-centric neighborhoods like Richmond Hill and South Ozon Park in Queens, Flatbush and Cron Heights in Brooklyn, and Castle Hill, Wigfield, and Soundview in the Bronx. The Caribbean LGBTQ immigrants we serve face unique challenges, and they often do not have access to family and community networks like other immigrant communities, many of whom have been abandoned by their biological families and/or fleeing prosecution due to anti-LGBTQ violence in their home country. Many of the barriers queer Caribbean immigrants encounter every day range from lack of access to culturally responsive immigration legal services to housing and food insecurities, also to unable to earn income due to their immigration status and refugee status. Many of our communities have been actively engaged in survival sex work to earn an income, to live, and to afford legal services, which disproportionately puts their health and safety in jeopardy. Immigration is and will continue to be an LGBTQ right. The Caribbean Equality Project's Immigration Justice LGBTQ Immigrant empowerment initiative addresses the service gap for LGBTQ immigrants in New York City. Newly arrived and existing community members need asylum application, obtaining gender-affirming identification through IDNYC, legal name change, housing, clothing, food, financial, and adult literacy, and HIV and trans healthcare. I am calling on the New York City Council Committee on Immigration to invest in funding support for community-based organizations to prioritize community-driven solutions to legal immigration services. Caribbean Equality Project is a proud member of the Eighteen Percent and Growing Campaign, a critical and diverse citywide campaign uniting over ninety API-led serving organizations across New York City to fight for a fair and equitable budget that protects the needs of our most vulnerable communities. Caribbean Equality Project urges the New York City Council to uplift the collective priorities of the Eighteen Percent and Growing Campaign, which includes expanding AAPI Community Support Initiative to seven-point-five million, the Nonprofitization Fund to seven-point-five million, and the Access Health Initiative to four million. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll next hear from Catalina Bustamante, and if they're still available on Zoom, Alex Martinez, followed by Maria Mohammed Miller. Catalina Bustamante, you wait for the sergeant to give you the go-ahead to begin.
You may begin. You may begin.
All right. I believe that Catalina Bustamante may have dropped off. I will list the remaining names now, just to make sure that we're not missing anyone. Catalina Bustamante, Alex Martinez, and Maria Mohammed Miller. If you are still available on Zoom, please use the raise hand function, and a member of our staff will call you.
You may begin.
I see that Catalina Bustamante is back with us. You may begin if you're ready. Catalina Bustamante, if you are currently attempting to testify, we cannot currently hear you in chambers. hear you in chambers. I believe we are going to have to move on at this point. We have now heard from everyone who has signed up to testify. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raised hand function in Zoom, and I will call on you in the order of hands raised. I see Catalina Bustamante with their hand raised. Please wait for the sergeant to give you the go-ahead to begin.
You may begin.
Catalina Bustamante, can you not hear us? Okay.
We're having difficulty hearing from Catalina Bustamante at this time. So in that case, seeing no one else with their hand raised in Zoom or present here in person, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to seventy-two hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. And with that, I can turn it back over to Chair Aviles to close us out.
Great. With that, I want to thank everyone for your participation, and that concludes this hearing, and we want New York City not to do stuff, but to do better. Thank you.